2022 regular meeting to order. Welcome everyone to our new abode. We're very excited to be here. I will ask that we refrain from having side conversations. As you can tell, there's a lot of echoing in here, which we'll be correcting eventually. But so let's hopefully respect one another and as we do this meeting. So should we have a full form with Jamie online there? So right off the bat, I need a motion to allow council member to participate remotely. All's in favor?
Aye.
All right. Question passes. So we have a full form here. Next up, we have adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes, additions?
So D, this is the consent agenda, a new number six. Consider adoption of the list. And then we've got a new development policy, policy being from our base, sponsorship from our base, when we get the pictures. Under G, actually, it's going to be different now. New letter F, which will be village hall. G will be unfinished business. H will be new business. And under H, a new number six, which will be discussion of village hall grading and lawn maintenance. A new number seven, which is discussion of consideration for village hall pedestrian and landscaping light. And a new number eight is discussed regarding planning for village hall.
Any other additions or additions to the agenda?
For a quick change, I'm just going to establish the man also who is in emergency prepared for the shorties. I don't think that was the time to say that.
It's already on their call. I'm changing it out.
Okay. That said, and no other additions?
Did you get the number eight or?
Yes.
I'll need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Still move?
All's in favor? Question passes. Next up, we have a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Is that you, Austin? All right. First up, we have present. Public comment. Do we have anyone here for public comment?
You do have someone online who signed up, but I don't know if he's on right now. Mr. Jonathan Thomas, who's running for the Board of County Commissioners, he signed up to speak. I don't know if he's on, but we can see if he is.
Jonathan Thomas, are you on?
I hear you. Can you hear me?
Oh, there you are. Yes.
Yes.
We hear you loud and clear. Jonathan, just go ahead and state your name.
I hope the reception's clear. It's a little static here lying.
Yeah, we can hear you loud and clear. Just state your name and your address, and you got three minutes.
Excellent. Well, my name is Jonathan Thomas, address is 216 Charleston Lane. I appreciate everyone having me this evening. I apologize if I couldn't be there in person to check out the building, but I was locked out with a last minute commitment. I go to you this evening as a candidate for the Board of County Commissioners. I'm currently the chairman of the Union County Plan Award and all this more. I have worked for Oregon in the way the Lincoln County Council's decision to deny approval for the apartments there at Providence and Newtown. Also denial of the cell tower at Tappaway Road and addition of the new cell tower UVO, which protects residents. And that was initiated by some folks in Oregon. So I've been a real advocate for the municipality. And we really feel like we need to get some representation at the county level for some folks, if you're less involved in the county, where I live and where you live. And I feel like that's been the case. So I will thank you much for your time. I will say that I'm going to vote in front of the way until Saturday at 3:00 P.M. And then the election is Tuesday. My name is Jonathan Thomas. You can reach me at my Facebook page or thomasforunioncounty.com, and I would appreciate your vote.
All right. Well, thank you, Jonathan. Appreciate you dialing in for us. Sorry you couldn't be here in person, but totally understand with other engagements. We'll make sure to make a note for all our residents and put out a reminder to go vote on Tuesday and not before early voting. And good luck.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I don't have anyone else.
That said, we'll move on to presentations. Okay. I show we have Union County. Brian Matthews. Here and guarding the development, president, new development, press for Union County Water and Cities. Thank the mayor and governor. I'd say they're the world. I have sunglasses on. Anyway, Christina asked me to come, and I think you had some questions about the two ordinances of the board adopting the decisions that they made. And I provided each one of you with some of the written responses. I just got those today, so I apologize if I didn't do this. But I thought I'd go through them individually, and you might have some follow-up questions if you could go from there. I know that the great interest you have, project that fell within the decision the board had to not put a pump station, particularly a project that we prepared to market, I think that was. And that might be some of the questions you have. So I'll just start with the first question. You talked about, you know, the project being denied, and how does that affect the project? Was it developed or paid those costs? How that works? Just to be clear, just to make sure everyone understands, the board always had the ability to make decisions about infrastructure that is an interim solution. And that's what the developer was proposing, an interim solution, not a permanent solution for wastewater. We did not identify any sewer to be served in that area. And because we didn't identify that, he was proposing something to actually pump to a different location and connect to that. We call that an interim solution. And the board has always had provision in their ordinance to be able to make decisions about interim solutions. And that's what they did. They decided that they were not supportive of that interim solution, because it wasn't a long-term solution in their, in their view. The question is whether we pay the cost. The developer pays the cost of pump stations. That's how we can do it for Union County. Unless it's a capital project that we identified that we're going to do, all pump stations are paid for by the developer. That's how it works. And then are there any standards? Yes, we have our own standards for water and sewer ordinance as well as our own specification manual. And the developer did follow those requirements for some of them. They did not submit anything that was contrary to our specifications.
With the, talking about the developer's, I guess, building and paying for the pump stations. And I know that he said that that's an interim solution. What is, what's our best long-term solution?
So the long-term solution that was potentially identified, that's not in our capital, capital project ordinance, is that it would flow by gravity to a development that's called, well, an area for water. That's not under development, so that's some time away from whether that mill will not be developed. That would then pump itself around to a different location. So everything by gravity would flow to that. I'm sorry, I have my map, so I can kind of show you a little bit better. It would actually flow down the water and then pump back around and then go to six mile away from where it was designed to go. Because right now, heritage doesn't flow the direction of pumping and to pump across a basically ridge to get to where the sewer is.
Right. So if they can get it to where water is going to be, then it will get through?
That would also have to be identified, because it wasn't, we didn't adopt that as part of our master plan. So we did not identify we were going to provide sewer for that area. So in the long term, if we were going to provide sewer for that area, we were going to gravity flow to a certain location where you can collect more stuff. You want more flow to come to the point where you can pump a greater amount of flow. This is one development, one pump station. Doesn't really make a lot of sense. You want to collect as much as you can and then pump that to where your nearest discharge point is. That's not identified as our capital plan, so there isn't a long-term solution. That's just staff telling me that if we were to look at a long-term solution, that would be a long-term solution.
Okay.
I understand that the master plan that we have, which is 2016, we are in the process of updating our county master plan. As part of that, we do seek input from all of our jurisdictions on things that you want to accomplish within the work of the county. We then have to build that into how the plan works, what it takes to make that effective. And then the board, we're in the process of more food to do to update our master plan. There are always areas within a sewer service boundary that we don't plan to serve. It's expensive, maybe development's just not there at the time, so we don't show that we'll sewer serve if a jurisdiction wants that to be served. And that needs to be kind of explained, unless so we can build that into the master plan.
How long would that take?
We anticipate the current master plan will be ready sometime summer of next year. Riff process of working with the board. So second question was, what's the average cost of a pump station? There really isn't an average cost, because they vary according to rate. They go from about $50,000 ones to millions of dollars for a pump station. So there really isn't an average cost. It depends on the size and how big the project is. To give you an example, town of Waxahaw is doing a project where they have to pump. It's just their property. We're told that that pump is estimated at $200,000. So it's a wide range, so there really isn't an average that we can tell. Anywhere from $50,000 to several, depends on how much you put in. So with this heritage district, we have one potential development that may go in at the end, and then there's potential other ones that are coming in. So if that developer is going to put in that pump station, they would just be doing that for their area only. There'd be no consideration of any others. We know that if other areas in that area were still needed to, and I don't know where the flow goes, so if they all need to be pumped or something would be natural flow. So what we try to do is we try to look at, what is the natural area to flood to help? And what else needs to be a certain size? We don't make the developer build it to that size. They have to build it to the size of their development, but they may have to contribute a proportional amount to expanding that in future. They don't pay the full cost of serving every property, but they may have to put some proportional share to it. It's my understanding that heritage is kind of like a one, there's not a lot that drains to that, but they're really only responsible for the size of the pump that they have to put in, because everything else goes the opposite direction. So it's not likely to create, where I talked about water, if they're flowing down with water and they're pumping back around, that's when you're gaining a bigger area so that you can have your pump station serve a larger area. My opinion is this property is going to be served by one pump station, and that's it. You're not really going to serve much help to it. Down on that end, there's no pump in that area currently? So that's where we were having issues with smell for a number of years.
If they said it, it's not going to be long. There's a pump station down at Bat Creek, but that's Mecklenburg County, right? Or the share, I believe, towards the share. It's right on the county line, right at the creek.
It's, it could be ours going to be there, not, not even sure if it's ours or not.
But the sewer line runs down, that's why they're cleaning. It runs all the way down Martin Road.
Does Martin Road go into Mecklenburg County?
Yes, so we don't have sewer everywhere within, and again, I don't have a map to show you, but unfortunately sewer's not everywhere in Martin. Certainly, that's why I have the entire distance of Martin.
It's certainly traveling down Martin Road, but we're not on Martin Road.
I have a map, really, so I can't show you.
But does Martin Road go down into Mecklenburg County?
I believe it does.
Okay.
Let me ask a question real quick. So an interim solution, pump stations are interim solutions in general. Obviously, not everything can be gravity bid. So in those areas that can't be gravity bid, what would be a more simple solution for those specific areas?
Well, the, again, really, what it boils down to is trying to serve the largest area. So we do try to look at, if a pump station's necessary, we really don't want pump stations to serve small individual properties or only one development at a time. We'd rather serve multiple developments, so this is more cost effective than that.
So hypothetically speaking, yes, this project that was proposed, it was denied. If it was a larger pump station that serves more than just one residential development, would it have had a higher aptitude to be approved?
Again, what it boils down to is that the board said, we did not identify a long-term solution for this area, therefore, we don't want this to be interim solution. They did not have a long-term solution in the plan, so that's why I got the guy. Moving forward, we just have to know from the jurisdiction what long-term solution you want. You want areas, understand there's a cost. Everything is not for free. So if we build into our plan, putting these things in place, there's a cost to that, just the developer's cost, county's cost, because we have to maintain it, own it. We have to pay Charlotte for all of our waste. Six mile, we send all of our waste to Charlotte, where it can be treated for the Six Mile Creek Basin. That is a perpetual reef. It never goes left. And the reason for that is, we don't have another solution to treat this waste. So we are at their mercy for whatever they charge us for treating that waste. So that is a big decision the board has to look at. If they're scanning service within the Six Mile Creek Basin, how much is that going to cost in the future? What does that mean for utilities? And that's what they're taking.
So what's the capacity go in the Six Mile Creek?
So again, we couldn't tell you what Charlotte's capacity is. We have a 3M, 3M G D contract, 3 million gallons a day contract. Right now, we send roughly 1.8 million gallons to them for the treatment. When we have our diversion line on, which is called Park Hill Divergent Line, comes up on creek, we'll send another half million gallons or so occasionally to reduce the divergence. So generally, during some of those high weather months, we may send two and a half million gallons or so to Charlotte for treatment. That's our current capacity for treatment. What Charlotte has in the, in the system, couldn't tell you. We do have a study that we are working with city Charlotte on to figure out what capacity could we send to them if we wanted to expand that. It's not necessarily their treatment plan that's the issue. It's all pipe sizes to get produced from. So while we can send 3 million gallons today, we don't know the pipe sizes in Charlotte to be able to know, can we send six, can we only send four? What can we send? We don't know the answer to that. Charlotte has said, okay, you guys can study that on your dime, you can pay for it. And we're doing that, evaluating what it would take, if we wanted to send more, or wanted to up that contract from 3M G D to higher now. We're not anticipating we'll get that until sometime in 2023, because we've got consultant work. So the heritage district has been in play for quite some time now, and it's started as our ideas and thoughts, and it's now reality. Of that, I know there's one on the end that's proposed development, but above all, but maybe if you noticed anything, how much is it gravity of the whole heritage district? If you're familiar with it. I couldn't tell you. I don't want to mention that. Gravity does not flow. The whole boundary was proposed would be pumped to our current location of the sewer, which is across Martin. Again, they have a subdivision that's pumping to the faster part.
So there, hold on, there's two things. Joe talked about the entire heritage district, I mean, you're talking about the heritage neighborhood. So we've got 125 acres that is our heritage district that will start.
Basically, here, right where we're at, and then it goes to?
To the heritage neighborhood. So I think that's what Joe asked me. Out of that, 125 acres, not?
I could tell you how much flows from that. If you give me a copy of what you call your heritage district, I'll have my staff look at it, but I couldn't tell you how much of it is by gravity or how much of that people.
So let's say all of it has to be.
Well, I was going to add in, when, I think Crystal got us something back in October of just a rough, based off of what I sent her of the heritage district itself, and some of it, yeah, pretty much everything that side of the road would flow to the pump station. I think everything this side of the road could flow to the backside, to the, yeah, to the preserve.
So if we have like the south side of the heritage district, which is probably 70 acres?
Between Odell Previs and Lett. Yeah, I mean, that's right around 75.
I'd say that's a proportion of it.
So if we have that bit of an area, not just one neighborhood of 68, would that make it more valid?
I think, I think the way to approach this is that if you have desires for areas to be served within the community, that needs to be communicated to us and our consultant in our master plan, so that we can build that into our master plan. And then our board, if they've got a plan, then that's part of the long-term solution. And therefore, they've got the resource versus China era solution. It's a planned long-term solution. That's your best approach. I know that's not quick, but I know that that's how they gravity approach it. You tell us what you want, we build that into the master plan.
What do we do in the interim with all of these people developing? Because it's private property that they're going to develop, and they're going to develop. So what do we do with them in the interim?
Well, they can only develop with well accepted. They can't vote on sewer. Sewer doesn't flow by gravity. If there's water, obviously, we can add water and septic in. It's really, that's a development that you make based on your management controls. We don't have management decisions for you. So if they can develop with septic, then they can develop with septic, and we don't, we can't stop them.
Is, no, I was just going to say, is the permit denied just for residential, or is it for residential, any residential?
It depends on the pump, the request. So it's about the pump station request, and it could be for any. So the town of Waxahaw was turned down, that's a residential. So it really depends on the circumstances of the pump station.
So you mentioned this water thing, what they're, they're probably going to start construction by this, this year, correct?
Yes, currently with Beachwood Homes, I spoke to the project manager for that last week. I think they've had some conversation with you guys on, one, making sure they were still approved and the capacity's there, but two, I think they wanted to potentially look at minor revisions to their plans, and they're going through that process. But that, from my understanding, what I was conveyed is that does not impact their already approval, as long as it, from a capacity standpoint. So, but timeline on getting those approvals and construction and so on, I have no idea.
So keep in mind, while, you know, we're just talking to the staff, and okay, what would be the better way to serve an area where you flow from off down the water, that doesn't mean that you, as community, could tell our board that you'd rather see that pump over and that area served by a pump station and not necessarily flow on a broad one. That won't be easy. I want y'all to understand, because I can't show you on a map, but there's a subdivision that's kind of in the way. You're going to do a lot of impact to that subdivision by trying to put sewer, sewer names in there.
Yeah, and they've already expressed that.
That is, it would be an easy fix. And no developer really would want to take that on without there really being a major way for them to recoup their costs. So while that's the long-term solution in the best way, that may not be the long-term solution you want to propose. You may say, we want this area of the, your south area here that's served by a pump station like the water here, our. If you communicate that to our folks, we can build that in our legal plan and report it to the board. I would suggest you approach it from that perspective.
Is it possible if, on the heritage subdivision site, quote unquote, a larger pump station would flow, to take into consideration some of the houses and stuff that are along Newtown and even that, that are currently on septic, for like that possibility of having those connections? Like, would that be taken into consideration of just potential customers? And I mean, I know that's infrastructure on your end at the long run, but at the same time, if the, the main line's there, then it would just be tap on the individual customer to connect.
Generally, when you have existing homes, you've got a commitment from those folks to connect, so we usually don't count those unless we have, you know, written commitments that these folks want to connect. Because if you already have a separate system that's working, why do you want that to happen every month?
True. It all just depends on the age of those.
And that's true. If they've got a negative system, the people obviously would like to make that connection, but it's not common that you run into that situation.
So I just got to say, when this first came out a couple of weeks ago, you know, I had to sit back and think, how much impact did the interim agreement that was proposed earlier last year have an impact on this particular issue? So I went back and started looking at that interim agreement. There's some coverage about the size of the infrastructure, and you just went and put into the master plan.
Sure.
And knowing that we didn't agree to the agreement, I wanted to kind of think how much that lack of agreement affected any of what we're seeing now.
Sure. So the discussion the board had, the ordinance that they adopted for pump stations, they had that discussion for quite some time. That was a side issue. And the reason the board has been talking about that is they felt that they had no input into how and when and where our utilities are expanded. It was in our ordinance that you went through a process, and you could technically get pump stations. It was rare that the board got involved, even though they got the ability to, it was rare. They felt like they needed more involvement in that. That was separate to the agreement. I will tell you, though, one of your questions in here, you asked about certainty. You said, well, how can, how can the developer be certain? That goes to that discussion of allocation. We need as much certainty as you do, because here's what's happening right now. We plan for what we think is going to happen, and we develop our water and sewer infrastructure based on that. And then low and low, a 300 unit development gets approved, and we only estimated it was 50. And there are all these changes that happen all around the county that we can factor into our projections for growth. And so now we have to build a whole lot more sewer capacity. Our pipe sizes aren't large enough, and it costs a lot of money to do that. So we don't have any certainty. So the idea was that if the jurisdiction would agree to some kind of allocation policy, then you know what kind of allocation you have, we know how to plan for it. That way we go past uncertainty. And that's been the board's biggest issue, is someone making decisions that we're writing a check to pay for. That's been their biggest issue.
I think our biggest concern, our board's biggest concern is if you, if we understood that the lack of, against communication in terms of what our expectations are from growth standpoint, but we don't know that from any given day. It's not dependent on what developers committed and proposed to us last year, and when we're sitting here, we didn't know this development, this proposal's coming up. We've had discussions about, you know, our master plan, about this district, which was just recently approved, so that lack of communication wasn't intentional, just because we didn't know. But if we knew that it was going to be an issue, you know, the next year, we would have rather you guys said that beforehand instead of us learning about things being denied.
The two are not mutually, they're not tied to each other, unfortunately. I think that it is, it's a case of they affect each other. I think the board's biggest concern is, is that, and I'm not picking apart, but I'm saying this is counterlied. You have jurisdictions making decisions that consume a great deal of our resources, and we have to pay for it. And so the board said, well, we can't treat one jurisdiction different than we treat all of them. So we're going to come up with a proposal for a standard, and it's going to apply to everybody. So we're gonna come up with a proposal for a standard, and it's gonna apply to everybody. And that's where they went with this. We are still going to be discussing allocation at some point in the near future. The board's gonna have to give us some direction on what we do with that and how we do that. So that's not going away. And ultimately, we'll have to come back to each jurisdiction and say, here's how we propose to do this. Give us your input on how we handle that.
So what do we have here in terms of, what are the next steps? What do you need from us? What do you need to garner more certainty for our people that may get one with our jurisdictions?
So the board has some pretty heavy lifting decisions to make. We've got a work session on the 18th and 19th this month. And they're gonna have to give us some direction on capital projects that they want to have included in our upcoming budget. And that's gonna affect rates. They're gonna have to give us some direction on rates. What they want those rates to be or willing for them to be. So for us, giving us what your future land use plans are for your community. What do you want your community to have as far as future growth? So that we can then have that as part of what the board is reviewing in their discussions with future capital.
I think we can definitely do that, but then how does that solve the issue in the interim?
In the interim, it's not going to solve the solution. I don't have a, a quick fix solution for you. I don't. I think that the board's concern is that they feel like the decisions that are made are one-offs, and they don't know what we gotta plan for. So that's why they're taking, they actually take it. They really wanna plan for how we're gonna serve all communities, not just Markham, or the Indian Trail, how we serve all. And then build that into a rate model, and build that into a capital plan. So it's not fast, and I can't give you a solution for how you fix Heritage or any other project for that matter. It's going to be a long road, in my opinion. Frank, I'm already looking at this with the board, saying, how long have we been mulling over this? So for pump stations, they've had this discussion for several months. They've asked staff for information, we bring it back to them, give them some data. It was only recently where they said, okay, we wanted ordinance for where we actually take some decisions on the ordinance part of it. But they have been talking about it, asking questions, getting information all along for several months. At least four or five months they've been talking. It's frustrating from a town perspective. We invited the whole board to our retreat. And not a word was mentioned of any concerns or things that we should be looking out for, that sort of thing. And our land use plan was approved well over a year ago. So, and in fact, me specifically talking to board members, I think a lot of them and some of the planners, if you will, were excited about what we were doing with the Heritage District. And now we told it, okay, well, let's pack the brakes in this. And I know we have a few developers in the audience here, and I don't know if their councils are okay. If any of you guys have any questions for, since we have county here now, I'd be happy to entertain that as well. Because I don't know what I know. I'm not into this as a developer. Maybe I'm not, we're not asking the right questions and stuff, but this is, I guess, a good time to, so. I'm happy to field whatever I can. Okay, so, you guys have anything? Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I, from a question, just from a development standpoint, from a certainty. The project that was turned down, the city of Waxall got there, which is a very small interim pump station. So from a land and order development standpoint, there's still no certainty. So these projects got turned down, this project got approved, was separated that one to make, to for it to be approved and then. But the other thing, I think that, I think that to say that the broad, that that broad subdivision, that broad subdivision is the overall solution, I don't think that's, that thing was never designed for that. I mean, there's not even, there's not even a sewer stuff out there that we normally have to do to a rock and sand septic. But I think from a collectively, I think everybody involved in this Heritage District is more than happy to jump in and kind of, you know, do you think Heritage study and things like that to try to get a longer solution? But it's just, it's difficult for us as a developer to have some sort of confidence or guidance in the pool when these four projects get asked, and then the project that probably fits the bill, the resolution, when it's approved. That's, that's what I'm, I'm.
So keep in mind that the Waxall, they actually directed us to try and get the schools to agree to the gravity solution. It's just a solution. If we cannot get the schools to agree to the gravity solution, then we will allow a pump solution. So we are actually trying to get the gravity solution done, because that's what makes sense. A pump solution, that does make sense. I mean, you're exactly right about that. It does make sense. However, that particular piece of property, you can't serve any other way from Heritage, kind of similar to that. The certainty question, I think, with the board really focused, I'm sorry to turn my back.
That's right.
We can hear, and I think that.
It's not, it's not for all of you.
I apologize for that. So the certainty issue really goes to, the board wants a, they want a long-term plan. There was never a long-term plan to serve Heritage or that area. And so that's where they pretty much lay the power. It's like, we don't have a current solution identified. And while I said it's a broad one, or maybe, that's what the staff said. It all drains that way. In a perfect world, that would be how we want to serve. It's not our master plan to serve it that way. And it probably, if you were to do it in a real world, probably won't serve it that way. That subdivision that you have to go through, that would be hard to manage. So probably the pump station pumped over is the better solution, but how do we serve more problem? And I think that that's what they want, they want to, they want to serve this area. This is the density we're proposing in that area from a town's land use perspective. These are the types of use that we want to see in there, so that then they can have some greater certainty for themselves. Okay, if I need 100,000 gallons of capacity to serve that, I know I've got that in my plan, and I can serve that. And if we have an allocation policy with town, then they know that that capacity they have revealed on that project we've built, instead of it being consumed by all the other jurisdictions. If you're building projects, you don't require pump stations, and these are key to all of that. So that's why I mean, it's kind of a long-term solution. Look at that master plan another way. It's gonna take another six, eight months or more for it to be closed.
Is there, is there any from the, from a master plan, from a master plan, from that timeline, is there any, is there any interim approval process for a bigger area to be designed and approved through the county? Would the county, would it, if, if the, based on present, could the approval process start during the master plan process? Let all that come together for the master plan?
That's a good question. So yes, the provision allows for a submittal of a expanded project, or a different project. So if you, if, if the pump station for Heritage was turned down because of the interim solution, if you came back with a project that was different, serving more area, that can be resubmitted, and that can be reviewed. And that's, that's part of the ordinance that actually has that provision. But if you brought the same thing back, it's kind of like a resuming. You gotta wait a certain, I think it's almost a year before you can submit a same project with the same. If it's different, if it's wider, then you can submit that over.
Okay.
Question? Does the county, does the county do any reimbursement agreements where a developer can oversize a pump station? Because I represent a water and sewer district, it does this, they don't like pump stations either. But they do allow us, you can have to propose, you can always have ready, mark these. What they try to do is get some of these pump stations oversized, and they'll do some reimbursement agreements and other things. So when new development comes in.
And I don't believe in that. I know you are restricted with the marquees and everything else.
We don't believe in reimbursement agreement. We do have where this gets a little complicated, but the developer has to put in their, their solutions, or whatever that is, and serve it with ever size. Yeah, and so they only have to put in a pump layer, but we may size the wet well and some of the other things for the ultimate design of the project. But the pump and all the canines are just for their ground. When you reach a certain tipping point, which is over 50% of the entire flow system come out of the basin, then you have to put the full solution in. Now, you can get reimbursed based on when people come in and make payments for their portion of it, but you have to pay to put the full solution in. So what you should reimburse for here is, as though people come in, you get that portion of your, your cost. I think one of the frustrating things for us is we're talking to a developer that's in the roundabout area that's supposed to be coming whenever it's coming. Part of that agreement is for them to do construction tied into the sewer lines. And while they're tearing up that road, so we do it one time as well. Part of that agreement is the donation of land so we can put a fourth lane to make it very safe. So we got a number of issues going on by, you know, this being all of a sudden, you know, I can stop. Then, when they go to put in that roundabout, whenever that is. You're saying that, well, I guess, I don't know. What you're specifically saying is not how long it's gonna take for something like that to get through. Like, so we, we hear from him, and he's telling us next summer, we're gonna be putting in, we're starting to raise the ground to put in that roundabout, and then the developer, what?
Spring.
Spring?
Spring.
We'll get to that. I'm sorry, I take it up too much time. No, no, no. It's important, because we're trying to, you know, think about the whole big picture at 50,000 feet. And part of that was a donation of land that was gonna be part of the fourth, for a whole other neighbor. That is septic, that you try and will never have to worry about, you know, with sewer and stuff. But for all of that, so that, that's one of the, that's one of the challenges that you have to face. And, and again, the decisions were made on what they call a utility base, not a land expansion. Unfortunately, I think our board is aware of the land use decisions that you've made, because it doesn't come with them. They, they don't deal with that side of it. It certainly doesn't hurt. If we understand all of the things that are positive for you when it comes to the development of the property, I think that's helpful. But that is not information that we have, nor did they consider, that they were making when the decisions they looked at. We gotta maintain this pump. It's a term of service. We have to pay all the additional costs of septic shock and the treatment that they got there. And we never planned to seep this area to start. It was part of our planning of seeping this area. And that's what they may want to see. So, and again, it gets back to land use, information in the device. They may have, they may have different views, but I don't.
This is what I'm hoping, this is telling me how to do it. If, if the board now has this information, is there a chance that you go back and revisit?
And then the current ordinance is that the project has to wait a certain amount of time before it can come back as is. Now, we presented as a expanded project, and it can come back in less time. And certainly, all the information you have is certainly valid value. But as is, they can't submit it.
We need to come up with a new project with more people involved. It's like, you get something resubmitted, because the sooner the better.
Miss Michigan?
I'm sorry, I'm late. Anyway, but is, is the truth that everything, the South Carolina Road and the Western Waxall, Marla Road will float cattle ranch?
Uh, I haven't heard. I got the off.
Have they, have they, or how?
I think most of that does flow to that first.
So, and so would that be, is that something I'll look at for a pump section there?
So, again, it's not part of our master plan, and the staff, the news that they said, listen, you have a perfect solution, that's where we want a pump station, because you can drain more areas that you serve a lot of heritage. But we all know what their complication can give to that. So it was never, that, that area was never shown that easily. That's why the master plan is basically blank for any development in that area. Other than just soup septic. That's really all that exists of that.
You can ask the realtor, question for it.
We said, Dr. [inaudible].
Do we have, does, does, you can understand what's happening? We do not. Can you hear what we're saying?
We can certainly discuss that. We can have that discussion.
Is there something more spicy down the road?
Uh, there could be. I think the language of water and sewer district may have some facilities that can serve that area possible.
I know that in North, they have the same problems with land use control. They don't have, they don't have, they have to play the various challenges, right? And that's all. They, why would we even develop up there?
And so the South Carolina side could be, I mean, we currently partner with them on water, but we don't have the sewer connections there.
It might be, it doesn't even make sense.
It may be, that's right. You can't say they won't.
Well, who would you, would it be you that wasn't to talk to them, or?
As far as the, the. It would, it would be, first off, our board would have to direct us to have that discussion. Do they want to have an additional entity that we are in a contractual arrangement with, we're paying to ultimately treat our sewer? And the board would have to say that they want to do that. That, that has to really honestly come out of the master plan. That, that's where that needs to come in. They need to say, we want to serve this area. Here's the best way to serve it. It's gonna be really in the South Carolina side. The board has to say yes, and then that becomes, how do we fund that? How do we pay for all those improvements? Some of those are developer driven, some of those are county driven.
It would, could, we make a request to you to, to, I'll go from the board and make that request? Is this to see where it goes?
I mean, I'm certainly happy to bring that up to the board. I will tell you that you have a lot more clout than I do. So as, as elected officials, your conversations with them mean more than my conversations with them. I'm their staff. My job is to do what they ask me to do. But I'm happy to certainly bring that up to them and say, you, you know, you've expressed an interest in that. Yeah.
Chris, can you just give something else?
We got 34, 35 control board there? You, you, I mean, I would suggest you could just do, the mayor with our chairman, or the mayor, the mayor pro temp on our chair and vice chair. I mean, that way you don't have to, it, it's up to you, but it's just easier from a scheduling perspective if you do, you know, your mayor, your mayor pro temp on our chair. See, I always recommend elected officials have a lot more clout. Do things you want to see, things that you want done. Meet with our. I, I just, I'm sort of flattered actually, with the 18,000 cars that are coming through here. The roundabouts we had put in, they never thought that this would ever be at some point developed, whether it's homes or commercials showing for that. And it's just, well, and again, remember, that was a 2016 master plan. That was a number of years, and the work started before 16. So that's why we're updating it, and certainly better information, newer information to build into that. And we may have already gotten some of your land use plan information, but I know our consultant has been contacting town. We may already have that information.
Well, I'm tapped in the land use standpoint. I'll definitely add, or get you guys a copy. We had, we did a small area plan for the Heritage District before it was.
That would help as well.
And it's very bare bones, but that, I already made a note. I think anything that's approved in your guys' master plan, we need to probably adopt it or make sure it gets added as a revision to ours, just where the consistency's there. I think that would help. If we have to update a land use map or something, an app and that coordination.
I think that would absolutely be very helpful. That's one of the things that we've asked the consultant to do, is to, you know, try and find out what every jurisdiction is, they have adopted, because adoption's important. I mean, you've made a commitment to it.
Right.
Any other questions from council? All right, so I think we have our margin of error. If you have any more questions, make sure, I know you, you're in that meeting as well. It's great. Thank you. I haven't got much to answer any more questions. All right, we have good news, I'll give you, if you want to add.
All right, we appreciate it and thank you for coming to my presentation.
Next up on presentations, show we have a presentation of Marvin School, Marvin Road and Newtown Road Roundabout Update, NCDOT, is it correct?
Yes, sir.
So, it sounds like the issue continued for the growing areas in Newtown for sure. Land issues very challenging in the channel as it is. I think they're spread out. And that previous issue with the sewer obviously passed on the fact of the roundabout. But thank you all for having us tonight. I want to give a brief update on the Marvin Road and Newtown Way Roundabout. We have in continuing our riding acquisition work, we have stumbled into some new information related to that sort of like a roundabout near our riding acquisition. So, we know that if you have to figure out what we're going to do with sewer situation now, right? I mean, I feel like that's something that we can work through. It can be fun to have this all played out, but there was one problem that turned out, actually, is the metalwork lane, both providing the itself. There was a discrepancy of ownership and what appeared to be the owner was not the owner. What it comes down to that we have and the continuation of our, I would call them delays. And it really is just become our new normal in receiving appraisal back. I think we're looking at it still with the same timeframe of later construction going into construction by spring. But the utility work that we can hope to start out with, and this is leading into the next part of the update. You know, we intend to try to start with what we call the late utility work during the winter months. We're not going to get the overhead utilities and everything to be okay at any time because of the parcel acquisition challenges. Couple of that with the fact that the entire industry is experiencing material delays going in or that. A lot of pipe products in particular, a lot of cast iron type pipe products that may have been used in residential phases have developed into a very long lead time. So what we're planning on doing is amortizing this contract awarding it in November. The similar timeframe is where we were. That'll give that contractor time to know they've got the job, they can preorder the materials. So instead of, you know, amortizing the awarding of the way they want the materials to show up or hopefully that we can give them that advance notice. Still be able to start construction in the spring. I think it's going to have a net change in completion time, probably not almost to twenty twenty-three timeframe. It does give us a little bit of time to maybe figure out and understand what the sewer issue means for the potential development that we were working with, trying to roll in the plan. You know, that was all plenty of information to me and the team, I think this is here too. But, you know, I think just first glance, it looks like that development may not happen, right? Or at least in its current capacity. But if it does, if it doesn't, I think we're certainly able to deflect and maneuver. It could turn out that we're going to have to purchase that segment of the metalwork lane if it turns into a connection there. Even condemn for that because, you know, one group says they have done on it, we're saying they do. I don't need to tell you that our property could have been into, but ultimately, I think we're at the same ballpark. Certainly, the structure makes year completion, August of twenty-three is the current time.
So if the development doesn't happen and they don't want to donate the land, what do you guys need for a four leg? What happens then?
So, you know, I think the original version of the design showed metalwork connection used to the east of our, you know, that one there. But, you know, you know, just from, again, first glance, and I didn't have a long time to think about this, but, you know, I would play this bit. We try to consider tying that again to the four leg around about, or they have to, I don't know, put into it. It may require, you know, more purchase rather than donation right away. That's going to impact the cost, we've all heard that conversation before. You know, that Marvin is responsible for project governance, you know, but I don't want to say we've got to push it. But, you know, we've been trying to be conservative, you know, considering the price increases that we're continuing to experience. So it's possible that the funds could be there, we won't know that until we get through that. So, if, I guess, if everyone thinks it's a reasonable idea, if that development doesn't happen, I think, I think we should look hard at trying to make that more in a local way.
In the opinion of one, I would say regardless of the development doesn't happen, I don't want it to be another reason not to put that in there. I mean, it's just, well, we're waiting for the fourth leg, whether we can get the funding for it or not. That was another question I had as far as, what have you seen as far as increases percentage wise? Because we have the government too, we were just talking about an hour earlier about. Based on what we budgeted for the overruns were already underwater with what may happen. I mean, so then we're changing the landscape. But right now, what do you see in the increases? Like, if you had a box.
So, we're ever bit of, you know, ten percent higher than we were, you know, this time last year. Asphalt prices were, you know, it is directly impacted by dual runs. You know, it's cruel, you've got to be careful in it. Liquid asphalt is around like, I think it's like seven hundred plus dollars a ton. Which is liquid piece, which is only a percentage of the asphalt base. But, you know, it was probably five hundred dollars a week, couple of, you know, several of them. You know, what we're going to do is take the unit cost of the estimate that we have now and apply that to the unit cost. Get you guys that information, you know, if it's changed dramatically, certainly, we're going to keep you guys informed. But that's an ongoing issue, right? And it goes across all the runs.
So if the development doesn't happen and the land is not donated, at what point, and I'm not sure, I know that eighty thousand. So at what point do you guys then pivot and tie in federal land as the fourth leg?
So we would need enough time to redesign.
But when do you need that?
I'm thinking about this. I think it would want us to take it by the right way of approach. That's what I'm assuming, it just wants to, when I understand about the issue.
Yeah, additional, not everybody.
And then, yeah, an additional right way of approach. Because we're talking about redesigning, right? New right way area to take, it's something we haven't gotten to play with in the current plan. So, we push as hard as we can push and plan for these things with this project, you know, over a five year. We got from just the other day, you know, I was very not excited about it because that, that lead time is just amazing to us to take that long. So, you know, that pushes five months from now, you know, if we can make a decision within a month. We could possibly, I don't think that area down there would be impacted by our utilities. So if we did all this stuff sequentially. I mean, I would definitely say by late summer. And even then, that would probably have a potential to impact the weather presentation. But again, that's against no utilities being in the way of that. I think that's the case, so it's pretty far off the beaten track. Lot of things about it, right?
She said we don't have futures that you could purchase, you have stuff that sits in the side and had the big yard and the house.
So, if nothing changes, we're still on the same time?
Yes.
No hurricanes, somewhat, yeah. I mean, I saw the weather last night, there we get a rock and a fresh snow off these coast right now. Fit for, would be like the earliest name storm or something, was that right?
Yeah.
Any other questions from council?
Christina, can I ask, do you want us to follow up with the team over the kind of leaks? Because I think it's, what happened to that?
Sure. That would be good. I'm going to make it more, say that you get.
Thank you.
I heard that's your open reports and updates and managers.
But we've got a nice town office.
Moving on to the beginning.
Where are your designated?
All right, next up, we have reports and updates.
Managers' reports. That's second, we did this.
Yeah, this is good news, right? Yeah, I'm going to go through a few items real quick. Brief update on the animal nuisance ordinance update. That'll be brought to you guys during the June meeting. I talked to Chapin about this last week. Due to us taking over credit enforcement stuff, I'm going to have like a full kind of nuisance section revision and stuff. So that will be brought to you guys, like I said, during the June meeting and taken into consideration, the comments and stuff from the previous meeting when it was being considered originally. In regards to accessory uses and structures, working on that text amendment, planning board was good with obviously the pool stuff and kind of creating those revisions. One thing they asked me though is looking at our accessory dwelling text. Right now, accessory dwellings have to be connected to the house. And wanted to know on your guys' input, if we want to allow standalone, like mother-in-law type suites or an access, like a pool house type thing? For that to be considered part of the text amendment? And I wanted to get your guys' feedback before I put in the time and take that to them next week. So, what's your guys' overall consensus with looking at that?
So is that something you would bring up in a work session meeting?
Would, no, it's.
For your asking, right?
I'm kind of at, this is general consensus, like, the way it's written right now is basically to disencourage any type of accessory dwelling. Because all it's, so in accessory dwelling, right now per ordinance has to be attached to the house, but basically it's just an attachment of the house.
I personally don't have any problem with that.
There's like three same grounds in Marbury.
Correct, and that, but that's, that's just a detached accessory structure. There technically, anybody that does a bonus room and stuff, it can't be classified as a bedroom per building code. Like, it cannot be livable.
So is that, and if you want it to allow, like, say for instance, my shop in my backyard, I have upstairs, I have my pool table and whatever. Could that be used as a mother-in-law suite?
So what if there are places like that over there? I know of a house right on my corner that has a totally separate building that has a kitchen and a bedroom.
When it was approved, per, like I said, per ordinance.
We don't allow that right now.
Correct. We allow, like I said, detached accessory structures and they can have those features outside of it. If it has a kitchen, it's not supposed to have, I think, per ordinance, a rain, like a stove.
Bathroom or kitchen.
Yeah.
But not both.
So my question, yeah, my question is, like, a lot of other ordinance regulate, they allow accessory dwellings that are standalone, but they might have a square footage maximum.
Oh, I don't know, I think we did, like, have that session.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
I don't know.
Oh, it's pretty.
So what I'll do is I might go ahead and do some of those revisions and then during the meeting at the end of the month? Where you guys would, the public hearings on the consent agenda to schedule for the June meeting. So we can go ahead and have those revisions in place. And basically, if you guys want to go ahead and scrap that part of what planning board decides, that's fine, and then we'll have the final text for that. Okay.
I know there was a reason why we had an available ordinance and I can't remember why.
I think it's strange, but that's just.
So you guys want to bring this up again at the work session?
MHC resulting update, just quickly, basically you guys had the, the PIM was two weeks ago. The applicant still moving forward with everything, obviously contingent upon the sewer. But tentatively right now, they'll be, it's going to planning board next, next week for their preliminary review. After that, they, the applicant will schedule a second PIM meeting, which Ben and I discussed, I think, looking at the first of June. And like I said, part of that second PIM is for any additional changes made. I know one of them that Ben and I discussed was the two entrances for that submittal. DOT is okay with one. So, some of that feedback and stuff will kind of alter their site plan. And then that will be part of its main reason for the second PIM. But I'll keep you guys up to date and we'll probably do something similar to what we did for the first one. I appreciate you guys coming to that one. I thought it was very, I thought it was beneficial for all parties. The Pulte Land Donation Update emailed then Monday. They, they're a little behind schedule, they talked about the development closing out in now June before the HOA stuff. So I'll, you know, continue making sure before that where we can work with them on getting that land donated.
There is a meeting posted before their first meeting.
So, that's still kind of just in the works. Preserve internal trail and Innisbrook connector. One, the preserve internal trail is, I guess, beginning construction, working on final easement documents to get that easement off of Gold, White Dogwood. Address or moved over, the HOA already approved it, but then there were some concerns from one of the neighbors and stuff. So, working through that to make sure that easement's in a better place for the trail, so it's not just in the wetland area mainly. So it doesn't impact us in the long run on maintenance. In regards to the connector, that email went out. The part of the project scope is one, creating that first part on the HOA parcel. I notified the property owners in Innisbrook that that was going in and also said, hey, you know, I'd like to have a greater discussion on trying to secure that easement for the pool connection. So, you know, I'll keep you guys up to date in regards to, no, not yet. The final thing is the county, and I've got Bjorn here, I'll probably let you probably speak on this. But in simple, the county received twenty-five thousand dollars in basically a PMW for transportation improvements from the subdivision there in Lancaster County. I think it's basically right behind Providence Estates. And they, they have three different options and kind of want to get some feedback on it before it goes to the county on how to, I guess, appropriate these funds. Do you, do you want to kind of speak on those three?
Jamie, I'm just council, I'm going to be going out some progress plan for the county to work in. Actually, this issue that we've been working on with Hunter, actually we worked and wrote it over a year ago. There's a large residential development in Lancaster County just across the county line, just west of Waxon Marvin Road. The TIA traffic and council stuff is done, said there was some improvements needed. I want to get the names of the roads confused as they cross over the county line.
Stacy Howey.
Yeah, Stacy Howey. And so they wanted to put a terminal in there, but Mike County wanted a roundabout done at one of the roads there. Developers said, we don't have the money to be able to do improvements, we just will let it currently in from Stacy Howey on the Waxon Marvin, which under that regulation, it might have been helpful. But the county, or the Mike County said we'll give cash to Union County instead. And said, okay, so they've given us twenty-five thousand dollars. County commissioners took extra money to accept it, the check is literally being written at its speed. And we'll receive it, it's with the general direction that it'd be used for traffic improvements in this part of the county. Which is reasonable because traffic going there, because it goes by the hundred, go to Waxon Marvin Road, then it'll either flow down to Waxaw Road this way. And so we have both three different alternatives for the use of money. We want part of the village, potentially Waxaw as well, to deliver some sort of improvement here. Twenty-five thousand dollars isn't going to do much. I've known Brett for years, before he became the division engineer, he started here with similar meaning. This job just here, it's bad news day after day, so it's stressful. You're experiencing what happens with projects, they're complicated, there's always issues going on. So we have three types of projects on a continuum. So we have three types of projects on a continuum that we're looking to partner with the village on. The first is the intersection Joe Carr and Marvin Road. Dangerous intersection. We worked with the city of Charlotte, the NCTOT, Charlotte Bridge and Transportation, and that division a little more than two years ago to get that road on the federal aid system. That's an inside baseball designation that allows it to receive federal funds to make improvements. Like that road, Marvin Road going to Margaret Hill could have never been on CARCO's home range handle funding because it wasn't on the federal aid system. It's not on the federal aid system, which allows federal dollars to go and improve it. That intersection's on our critical intersection, it's for the county, high traffic, severe traffic. It's also a high volume road. We don't know what to do there. Village doesn't know what to do there, DOT doesn't know what to do there. We didn't get any design numbers or a design process for the intersection because at the time it wasn't on the federal aid system. We're proposing that we hand the $25,000 to the village of Marvin with the understanding through their local that you would then administer a solicitation to hire a consulting firm to do a similar design process to what we did at the other intersections, such as Waxaw Marvin and Bonnefort Church, which was a very successful endeavor. Look at alternatives, come up with feasible designs, come up with cost estimates, and then jointly approve that design with the DOT, with the county, with the village. So it was the community, so that we all agree this is what we're gonna do at this location. That doesn't mean it's funded, it just allows you to then take that and apply for funds as opportunities to come along, which they do. So that's, that's the first option. If you're thinking about that, that's essentially term key, the budget, because something like that shouldn't be 24,000, $20,000. Say we give you 25,000, I ask how long for a little business? But you're taking on the administrative aspects of owning that project. So that's number one. Number two is your intersection project here at Marvin and New Town. If there are additional shortfalls in the future where the DOT comes and says, oh, the cost of $100,000, we would be willing to partner with you. If you said, hey, we're, we have $100,000 shortfall, we're coming up with 75, can you throw that 25,000 in to make up the 100? That's an option. The third is to use this 25,000 as seed money down at Waxaw Marvin and Bonnefort Church to say, hey, county, Marvin, Waxaw, DOT, this is an intersection I want to do as well. Let's, let's start cobbling together the money so that we can apply to CARCO or the DOT to do an intersection project here. So those are three options. We're not asking for action tonight, but we need to start a discussion deliberating sometime. Don't have any intermission questions. And we don't have a timeline for when we need a decision, but obviously sooner or better because it allows us to take advantage of opportunities for transit cycles and things like that.
So the third was Bonnefort, correct? So in your view, knowing what you know, prior, more critical Joe Carr's higher insider than.
Well, Joe Carr got this more spirit. I think that, because there's been a mentality that has.
Yes, well, Joe Carr, I got you.
Yeah, so.
That's, that's the intersection of Marvin Road and Joe Carr.
I know, I'm here.
Talking about the pronouncing.
I mean, that's, that, what you're doing is only establishing a design. You're not materially getting funded, you're just establishing a design for what you want to do. But the good thing about it is it's, it's a term key project. The 25 spent, and you have the literal, the one here, the intersection, it's just part of the budget. And the third one, 25,000, I mean, that's a whole $5 million dollar investment project.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, I feel like a year ago-ish, maybe you guys angle us with the different options that we've been roundabout and see what that may go set. But I feel like the price side, it's like five million.
I don't know if it's five, it's, I think three to four is safe to say that's what the number is.
Definitely five million.
Okay, I mean.
Four and a half million.
Well, this.
Yes, costs are difficult, no doubt about it.
This whole thing smells like South Carolina wants to encourage more traffic through the village of Marvin, which is already a huge flow. They're not using South Carolina roads. They actually drive specifically to go through Marvin to go wherever they're going. I live right in the middle of them, I see it every day, from Henry Nesbit, from Stacy Howey, from any connector that they can get to. All of those neighborhoods that they just keep rubber stamping every day, more and more and more houses, just like the one at the four-way stop, they're all traveling right through our roads. And every time we do something, we're encouraging more and more and more traffic. At this point, we're 26,000 cars a day on New Town Road. We don't want any more traffic here. So this, I mean, every time we do a road improvement, I watch the, the traffic go 20% at least higher than the first two roundabouts, one in Waxaw Marvin and, and right here. The past Waxaw, I passed my house on Waxaw Marvin. It takes me sometimes 10 minutes to have a driver over there. It, it's not doing us any favors by streamlining traffic through Marvin, in my opinion.
But you're right, that's, that's why all it will do is if they're looking for, and there is already a big issue on Stacy Howey, because I can drive to school with kids, that way it's backed up for a while, so that, I don't know, how that gets resolved there, I guess, in turn lane. But to your point, if, if that's, all that's gonna do is encourage more development, I think, which their way out is probably is send more traffic to us.
I'm, I'm gonna take a couple of points of clarification. Traffic volume on Marvin Road, this areas of mid-dollar teams. And I think South Carolina should say the same thing about the development, that it's through the western New Town going along towards 501, particular commercial traffic. And I think that in terms of reduced traffic, if you had a multi-lane road, that'd be a true, I think that'd be a true point. Once 16 is just finished and the rear road is ended, I think it's gonna support a lot of development that's just waiting on it. But for roundabouts, I don't think that's true at all, and these are primarily good safety, not necessarily congestion. So that's the justification for a lot of these intersectional park stations.
One way to make Joe Carr at Marvin Road safer is to reduce the speed limit on Marvin Road, which we have been begging at CDO team for several years to do, and they refuse to do it. Have you guys got anything pulled to get that speed limit?
No.
Because, you know, we're at this.
And I said, there's no point, because unless you're gonna park a trooper or a sheriff's deputy there 20%, it doesn't matter, the natural speed of the traffic is the natural speed. A roundabout will make you slow down because it's the first time you do a, it's a hazard for the people who speed through it anymore.
But I feel like, again, whenever you guys angle us for the dog staring at cars on Marvin intersection, you guys will also ask us what we prefer to add.
That's right.
Joe Carr.
No, that one, that one did not change.
Well, you guys, somebody came to us at some point, because I remember talking about it, either we had left turn lane, which we were like, no.
No, we didn't, we didn't do anything about the design considerations at that location. The only decision I just made is whether to put it on the list or not, and I said it wasn't made to put it on the list. I didn't make any decisions about what.
Somebody asked, somebody asked, I said, some will make you.
It was just.
Okay, well, somebody did, because they said you want a left turn lane or you want a roundabout. I was like, a left turn might kind of do anything for people getting out. You're just sending out two cars, so we sent roundabout there.
And to clarify, like, that 25,000 could be used for us to do a, have a consulting to what, what's the best improvements and then how to, you know, then proceed. So, so that's something to take into consideration, that's a.
Well, we'll put that on the.
We'll put it on the work session and then in turn, for your benefit, work session's May 26th. And then I think out of that discussion, we'd be able to then have a decision that we can take to the commissioners.
Like I said, no, no time crunch, but I don't think the county is interested in pulling the money, we want to get it committed to something. Obviously, the study does it faster, and then, God willing, in 18 months, we're celebrating the opening of that roundabout, because I grabbed it very quickly as well, and then the village will know of that, and so.
I can always put like 25 towards the officers, we can put it there.
You could propose that, I don't think it'll be all received by the county though. We're a lot of focus on this capital and improvements, but, you know, the operator, we think are very legitimate, but they do different things in terms of, you know, committing to a force of action. But we're supportive of partnership. As soon as we saw those plans coming to us, we knew we wanted to partner in this area.
Real quick, critical intersection grant. I know it came up during our work session, or the, I know you mentioned to me that it was proposed. Is the county still looking to add funding that, because.
That, yeah, that is, you know, our critical intersection local match assistance, which we've partnered with Wedding Tent, with Monroe, with Waxaw, and then just our own money for projects, is all that's been committed. We have a proposal to the commissioners for $1 million over five years, which is doubling their previous commitment, which honestly is probably about the same amount of buying power, probably things you're doing. But that is before commissioners, it's part of the budget for this upcoming year. They probably won't make a decision until June at the earliest, so that's the earliest we can be able to say whether we have the available, we could, we could process applications for, for requests.
Okay, and I'll discuss with you, because I've got an idea, but I just wanted to confirm.
Okay, I'll go without a question.
All right, and then that's all I got, my end.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Rex here for. All right, next up, Deputy Easter for. He's actually, he was at the roundabout, he was at the roundabout.
Does he hear it, right, are you getting it?
Did anyone have any questions, you guys have a chance?
No.
Well, you can read it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Planning Board for, John Jones.
It's not your name.
That's right.
He's just here listening.
I'm just here enjoying the field.
Yeah.
Whoa.
Oh, I'll pinch him for, for John.
Wait, you want to wear some airbrush?
She's such, yeah, she can't, she can't make it.
She's not gonna be able to come though, she has work.
Yeah.
Something, she's not gonna be able to.
Hang on, I got, basically, it's what we, hang on, the, the three items that were covered in the planning board. Planning board, yeah, I have my notes here, give me a second. But essentially, we covered about the structure, we're just, we're talking about having some sort of outline, building, what would that all be, and, you know, working that out. The big thing, then talking about the development, and the 68 homes, and there was some, you know, things brought up about that of, you know, just the viability of it, and that was essentially it.
All right, the R and G group.
I got, I just.
So moving on, consent agenda, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as, as stated, amended. All's in favor.
Aye.
Motion passes. Public hearing. All right, next up is open the public hearing to consider the adoption of ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the village of Marvin. All's in favor.
Aye.
A motion passed.
Yeah.
Yeah, we received an annexation petition for five lots. It's the villas at Marvin, it's the properties kind of right across diagonal from the park. So basically, this public hearing is just for the acceptance of those, and every, I think Austin already done this sufficient, sufficiency study thing.
Yes, that's already been accepted.
Yeah, been accepted. I haven't had any calls or comments about it, but then basically, if this is approved tonight, they'll be accepted into Marvin, and then at the next meeting, we will get their zoning designation. But other than that, is there any question on them?
Nope.
Well, I work.
They're not occupied yet, aren't they?
No.
Okay.
They haven't closed yet, I don't think any of them closed yet.
No, so once this gets approved, we can go ahead and, I mean, it's, the developer is the one who petitioned for them, and so they'll then be a dot, be part of Marvin before they close.
Okay. And so then technically, then once we can tie into right behind it, right? Because that's mine on the road.
It's still considered a satellite annexation because it's attached to our park, which is an existing satellite. So we can, we can build onto a satellite, but if, if a lot's been brought in and it's part of an existing subdivision, the entire subdivision has to come in.
I mean, that's all the purpose.
Yeah, you'd have to take the entire subdivision for that to come in.
They're solid.
They are, but it, it's complicated. It's possible, though.
It is possible.
Why, if you do it individually?
Only if it's connected to our primary corporate limits.
Man, if it's, and it has to be, like, if it's in a neighborhood, it has to be contiguous anyway, right?
Yes, if Walden, if we were to bring Walden Pond into Marvin, then we could go essentially lot by lot if it was contiguous in, in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
Annexation law's very fine.
Okay. And nobody is speaking publicly on it?
No one has signed up, and we have no one on the webex unless John wants to make a comment.
No questions from Council?
No. And your, yes. I was just gonna say, yeah, 60 days, is there any property in the decade day of annexations of this task that'll come up at the next meeting?
And I'm, and planning boards already reviewed and made their recommendation for what the zoning designation should be, so it'll be on, I think, scheduled for the June meeting.
Yeah, it'll be, the public hearing will be at the June regular meeting, and we already have all the public notices drafted and ready to go.
There's, on this side, five lots, so Will, Will has a lot for sale there. Is that already in Marvin?
No, he ha, he does, that, the lot that's immediately next to his that has a house on it currently, as it turns out, they were once one lot, and since they were originally, since they were subdivided, that house would have to come in with his lot if he, if we were to annex that lot.
Has that been locked in?
I haven't talked a little since I gave him that update, so.
Well, the initial files.
Yeah, but, yeah, that, the lot next to his and his, and that property that he wants to annex, used to be one, and so for it to technically be able to come in, they both have to come in.
Okay.
All right, someone make a motion to adopt OR.
Need to close the public hearing first.
Please. Close the public hearing.
Early discussion. All's in favor.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so I make a motion to adopt OR dash 2022 dash 05 dash 01 to extend the corporate limits to the village of Marvin, work down.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The motion passed. All right, motion passes.
The end of the talk?
Next up, Bill Chau.
All right, so there's a whole list on the village hall. Do you have your list?
We're here, we got it, right?
All right, so do you want to put up our old sign? The one that hung in front of the old one, with its telephone? I have this virtual over today. You guys want me to?
Yeah, somebody's here.
Right, right out here where the trail starts. Do you guys know where the trailer is?
Well, I don't know if we put it there, why wouldn't we put it at the other end of the trail, same village hall this way.
Well, just this is, because, or you could put it at that end, but put it on the trail somewhere.
I'm thinking, really, just like where, where branches comes to the village hall so that people know that that's the trail.
Oh, yeah. I just don't want to put it in the street, because we have, we have.
Yeah, yeah.
It's in the, it's in the branch.
Yeah, where branches comes up from the main trail so that people know that, on this way.
So you guys could preserve, and then the other, those are the preserve where it comes together right there.
Put it right there.
So it's like those all this way?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then it's like a last of 2,000 somehow, now.
I need to put one of those up there.
That would be exciting.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, is there any objections that were suggested?
They're waiting.
Okay, Andy, you're suggesting? That's, no.
Yeah, that would be my bad idea.
Should we add the footprints, like, you're a nice job.
All right. All right, so that's, where do you have the block?
Thank you.
I think you should have a Z from the street.
I was just saying, it should be brought up on the street. What do you think about ending the parking line outside of nail locks where it's visible from the street?
Yeah, I think it should be near as real as.
If you're right outside of the parking lot, there's like a nice little area.
Well, that's a good idea, too, yeah, right there, like, behind the.
Come up the stairs, transform to your left.
Yes.
Straight ahead.
To the left.
Like right by where the train's from.
Yeah, yeah, not, not there, somewhere in that area.
That works.
Yes, before you talk about.
Can you see it from the street?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I could see it where we're trying to, something to cover that they really, generally, during that corner, right there, because people would be walking, whether they, you know, have their. Yeah. Yeah.
There's a lot of stuff in there. Yeah, I would say the other side of the sidewalk. I mean, saying generally, but outside the sidewalk, there's stuff, it's busy in that.
I would like to personally take a walk and make sure.
Yeah, I mean.
I don't want to decide that right now, but if you guys aren't deciding, you can't have it. I didn't get that list.
So, yes, let's, let's walk around and look before we make a decision on it. And we're probably being more clear, actually, I'm looking at a specific.
You want to go out there and look?
We can get, we can do a call and ask, man, I don't feel like reading this, do it, if you don't.
I honestly don't care, I, it just needs to be the whole thing, so you guys make that decision.
I want to put it where your Christmas trees.
I was gonna say, I want to.
That's a challenge for the court. So we go out there.
He's fine for.
I just, no, we, we do need to have it close enough to the building that we can light it, though, so.
Right, yeah. Cause we have a light, because if you're, leave it up at the night.
I know, we got that, I like that.
It'll work, it's gotta be somewhere close to the building is what I'm saying. So that's what I'm thinking initially, is someone either right here or to the point.
Well, you have to walk out there. One day, you'll know.
Yeah.
All right, sounds good.
All right, Derek needs to re-rate foot lanes.
So, um, Derek's got, I haven't, I guess, he had mentioned some issues with the slope, I think he had problems before. Um, that they're having a hard time maintaining the area with the crazy weather down there. So we'll look into getting some clothes, he said it needs to be seeded. I, I don't have the details, we'll get some clothes, bring it back.
What do you think you're doing with it?
We, the thing is, we.
I'm just saying, we could disturb the ground. Yeah.
If we went out there and did it and then immediately stabilized the soil, I don't think we'd be going to get any problems. It's major grading, that is what their issue's gonna be. So, the main thing is, is just keeping the silt out of, out of the creek. So if it's, it's just graded and then it's solid or seeded and all that immediately, I don't think there's any issue with it. And it's not like it's a huge area either, we're just gonna ease the slopes. And that was always in the plan because they were just, they are steep.
I, I think there's proof that someone's doing it to work.
Right, and, and I don't blame them, it's very steep, it'd have to be done with weed or candy mow. That's why I had such a hard time with the generator replacement, it had to be back on after we graded the slope back once we got everything done and got everything out there, so.
So you're gonna have to wait again. Uh, next on the list is river rock. We talked about adding river rocks to some of the drainage areas around here and I think we get extra little armor on those drivers then.
So here's my advice on that. Before we talk about river rock around the drainage, let's see what we end up with, with a finished product on the grading. Because some of that grading out there should be done on, on both sides of the ditch because it's very steep against the sidewalk as well. So I think let's, let's reevaluate some there once the grading is completed.
You're gonna talk to Christine about the simple work grading actually needs to be done?
Yes.
I mean, we are just order, or just this is there.
Yeah, we can, we can address all those little grading issues out here. The, as far as the, the garden up here, that's gonna be in that scope of that particular project.
Marquis sign. Are, is, are, y'all interested in all the nice Marquis sign, like, apartment, you know, as you asked, that, that ladder brick sign or anything? Just wanting to get a bill, yes, we had a budget for it, it's not that something we planned, I just wanted to get a bill if you guys are interested in something like that.
Yeah, I was, I don't know the building, I can't see from every angle, I think that's probably.
Marquis.
Are you guys waiting on river rock?
Yeah, we're waiting on river rock.
Okay, movement generator.
Yes, absolutely.
Joe's not helping, dude. You're looking at it right now.
I was expecting to hear the job on tree care, I never got it at all.
You want to stay home?
Stay home as long, yo.
Okay, Andrew, trailer.
Yes.
That will be done tomorrow, wouldn't it?
This week, probably Friday morning. It's either, either Thursday or Friday morning.
Trailer's where?
The doors. Yeah, Christine and I have been checking about that, trying to get any else.
I'm taking issue right away with, he's getting that, he's saying, oh my God. What, who? What? Which one?
The cruise ship.
I, I, I want to say that's, that's not acceptable for a kid or a girl. I mean, the dancing is only this day, and they put that, and I, I'm amazed and it looks, the whole thing is just open and it looks up that other thing, I mean, I know that's just used by us.
I think it's for APA requirements, but I have.
But these bathrooms are APA. The, we need, the, we need a piece of furniture for these two bathrooms. And it's like, it's a thing.
But I, I mean, even just, he was specific, just trying to wash the rain.
Flashing that.
I was like, I had no clue, but I was, and then the actual faucet comes almost beyond the sink. Just so you know, it's not, we don't take that sink.
You do.
Good job, Andy. I'm gonna take full life back.
I'll say that it's on our list of things to look at, a lot of other things, but we've heard that the state is coming in to do an APA compliance check, so I want to kind of push it on one of our later items if we can address just in case, you know.
Cause technically, those would have to be APA.
From, from a statute standpoint, we don't have staff, APA, that, so.
Why can't they do, why can't they do that?
I, I don't know, I'm, I'm not like an APA expert, so I don't personally know.
Cause they're regulated.
You're not dumb, maybe people, yeah, my bathroom's here.
It's just like other things, some people, uh, have staff and we, and they, they are heavily regulated, no. They need a group.
They could be, but I don't know for sure, so I don't want to tell, you know, I don't want to say, yeah, and they come in and they think it's for, I'm just assuming, give it a couple months.
But we do, it's on, it's on our list.
We have a long list.
How about that?
How many of them?
Okay.
That's also kept.
Unfinished, please. All right, uh, next up, we're discussing consider adoption of ordinance to sanction a twenty-five dollar municipal vehicles tax.
Is that an actual motion for the record?
I can't, you do it at different stages, further discussion.
Okay.
I'm sure we'll keep discussions, so.
Further discussion?
Jamie, do you have anything, uh, cause we can hear you pretty well, uh, well, you can hear us, but do you have any comments on the twenty-five dollar municipal tax?
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine with twenty-five dollar thing, but I think there should be a sunset on it. My recommendation, I shared with Christina and with Kim, was to do a five-year, uh, sunset on it. So that way you, at this, everyone knows it's not an ongoing thing and it gives us time for, um, council to turn, you know, they, they don't like it, they can turn the council over, that, the full-size council, so, uh, this is my, this is my decision.
To, have you guys put any thought into, um, capping either number of vehicles or allowing the first, so many vehicles for household residence or anything, I mean, is there any thoughts of that?
I don't know if you can do that.
Can you do that? This is gonna be administrative. Go ahead, Jamie, if you had something to say.
No, I think, Ken, you made a good point when we were discussing this, that it's, it's, it's a fair, um, you know, follow what you, follow what you want, because if you have two vehicles, you pay, you pay fifty, you have five vehicles, you pay one twenty-five, so it's as, it's as fair as it can be. I don't think you, I don't, I don't think there should be a, you know, brief for two or something like that. It should just be straightforward.
Okay. And I was saying, cause you're gonna have, um, state that you're gonna collect, and it's, I don't even think they can do it that way. But it's gonna be administrative, for, for, so collect that on each registered vehicle. And I, I know it was, there's one comment, you got, I got one email, saying, oh, if you guys have heard from anyone else that the guy is, you know, I think the developed tax, um, in the end, you can see it, and I, I was gonna make the point earlier, I sort of did, that when we got into the road business, at five cents, I was telling them, there's no way we can do this. So we would eventually find ourselves in this position, trying to find a way to help fund it and this is perfect. In my view, the perfect way to specifically target, ten cars, five cars, whatever it is, it's a twenty-five dollar fee that just helps with the roads and, um, it, it, it doesn't necessarily penalize everyone who only has maybe one or two cars, but it does, since we are taking the roads over and we really don't have a source, and by the way, how they'll, they should, and these grants, and grants can go away, that the road, we may be stuck without, how they'll own the road, so I hope that that happens, but that, that's something that could happen. Um, again, it, it's a way, given the, what we saw in the budget earlier, um, which we're looking at deficits of over half a million dollars to just kind of keep up with the maintenance of this. I think it's a, it's a fair way to assess without necessarily adding the tax. And I, I like the idea of, um, sunset clause on it and the fact that, I think he said, Chapman, or it can be taken away by the next council. Yeah, so you can come and put, um, later to take it away, you just have to get enough notice, you probably want to do it with your budget cycle, because money shouldn't be appropriated, but at this time, next year, the year after, it goes certain. So the only thing we had, if we decided, we just wanted to have to let them know by July first, is that correct? Yes.
Ken, wait one week, know a lot of people, this can let the community have a little background, why they're doing this, because of something that's happened in our past here, uh, that other people have put us in this position. This has got something, we're trying to meet our obligations.
Yes, I would even conclude with this, ensure that, but yeah, absolutely.
Because the people I talked to, I mean, they, they think we're just money hungry, you know, just do it bad.
But all that's wrong with it, I guess, is we're just. I mean, listen, we all heard, both, both, um, who was here? Brian and Brett and Bjorn, all they kept saying is it's gonna cost more money, it's gonna cost more money, it's gonna be everywhere. It's gonna cost more money. Oh, well, that's funny, it could be twenty-five thousand dollars for, my daughter's probably gonna cost like thirty, it's real, it'd break off like forty, so we're giving you twenty-five thousand dollars if you do something, but you're gonna have to pay fifteen thousand dollars, and you're only, you have a budget for it, to do that study. All I kept hearing was, it's gonna cost more money and we don't have a legal resource that, that is guaranteed. And I remember about that, well, yesterday, I absolutely think we should continue to go after the annexation because that will be our reason, but it's not guaranteed. This is at least a guarantee of a hundred and forty-seven thousand. Forty-seven thousand dollars instead of forty-two thousand dollars instead of, you know, raising taxes. And Jayden and I were talking about it, it's the fairest way to do it because, you know, if you have two, like, just like you said, you have two cars, you pay fifty dollars, I have four cars, I would even rather that. That's something you've got to say, when you guys have a, you know, Marvin, and you know, Marvin, Marvin hasn't done anything to my neighborhood either, but I still think this is the fairest way to do it, instead of suddenly leaving a hundred five hundred thousand dollar house versus a million dollar house, you know, there's discrepancy there. This is the fairest way to do it. And I think we should do the max, thirty dollars, but we have over forty-five.
I'm in favor of it, I think that it, it's, it is a fair way. Um, you know, I, I, I got an email from a fellow that was concerned about it, about it being an additional tax and that, that we're playing catch-up and, and that's truthful, we are, but not by our own fault, but it's by previous councils that have gotten us into the road business. The objective is to get to all of the neighborhood roads, but in order to do that, we have to have additional revenue to get to all of the subdivisions within our jurisdiction. So the only way to do that is find alternate funding and this is a fair way to get the alternative funding for those roads. Otherwise, it's not gonna happen. And NCDOT is not going to regulate anybody's neighborhood roads, that's just a fact. They can't, they can't keep up with the, with the main roads. So I don't see any other alternative. I own several vehicles myself and it's, it's gonna cost me, just like everybody else, so, um, I, I have, I have to go with it as a, as a good idea, at least for the time being.
Well, um, we're not gonna vote on it tonight, so, I mean, that's good that we can, we can have a discussion. First off, I want to.
I'm, 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 I'm gonna put this up on the table.
She actually already made a motion.
Oh, I thought you were kidding, okay. All right, well, I have a couple of questions. First thing is, first off, I want to thank, uh, Christina for putting together a really good thing to evaluate and read and kind of figure, you know, what, what should we do, how should we do? Of course, we were given more news when we came in here today. Uh, first question I have is, I've got three of my vehicles right here that I recently paid and I have a vehicle here that's appraised value of thirty-three thousand and I'm looking at nineteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. Uh, that's, you know, looking at this next to Wesley Chapel, NFR Department and all that kind of stuff, but I see Marvin here at nineteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. So if we're implementing a twenty-five dollar, we're implementing thirty dollars, that's on top of this, which is obviously what the gentleman in the email was, was referring to. Um, you know, we're looking at, okay, it helps us out with a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, but it looks like we're way deeper than that and I don't know if this solves the problem. Um, and to sunset it or when there would be a sunset or to count on another council to make a decision on that, I kind of like something that when we were looking at the numbers earlier tonight, you know, maybe a bond. You know, why, why are we chipping away at something small? I think from the optics standpoint, I think in a point in town right now where there's a lot of inflation, um, I don't think this looks good. We've done a lot for Marvin, there's a lot of people seeing us do a lot of stuff and we've got a beautiful big building here. I just don't think the optics look good on this. Um, but I'm saying, yes, we need to come up with some sort of revenue source, but this is, if, if, for example, uh, Mr. Ju, Joe Q Public out there looks at this, it's that nineteen eighty-seven is gonna be nineteen eighty-seven plus twenty-five dollars. And I, I just think it doesn't look good, I don't think the optics are good at this time. You know, I would revisit it maybe next year, maybe we can look at a bond, maybe we can really look at hard numbers and try to figure out how we're gonna get ourselves out of this situation. I do agree with Wayne. If we put this out there, I, I, I think it needs to be extremely transparent. And again, the thing I'm a little concerned about is if I'm Joe Q, Q Public here and I'm looking at nineteen dollars and eighty-seven cents plus, let's say twenty-five dollars, let's say thirty dollars. Okay, what's this? Okay. dollars, let's say thirty dollars, okay, what's this, okay, so the roads are going to be done now, and I'm probably going to be sitting outside waiting for my roads to be done, and I think a lot of people are going to get upset when they're still sitting around, you know, like you maybe, Ken, in seven years, eight years, and saying, when am I, when, when are my roads going to be done? I don't think this is the way to go, because I just don't think it looks good, especially at this time right now, we've got issues with inflation, somebody could take this twenty-five dollars and put it in the gas tank right now, um, that's my personal opinion on it, I'm open to other ways, but that's my personal feeling, because I've really studied this, I've really looked at it, and, uh, I think we can go through a different way, if we're that much in the hole, road-wise, then maybe we need to look at a bond, I, I mean, we need to look at something serious and really take care of the situation, um, my opinion.
So how, so beside the bond, how else do you think we should raise the money?
Well, we can start by looking at what is it that we're doing now that we can cut back on to fill out this deficit we've got at this point, what are we doing right now that we can back up on?
In our operating budget, I mean, if you're going to pop one hundred thousand, you're talking about that sad, um, you should know how to.
Well, we talked about, for example, when we were discussing getting ideas, um, you know, we have a plan for greenways, okay, we have an, well, maybe that needs to be put on the back burner to take care of the roads.
So what should we add, you guys, fifty thousand dollars? Is that what you call it?
But where are we funding that each year?
We told how we were funding for it.
In our operating budget, we've been putting ten thousand dollars aside each year, uh, we just started doing that in the past three years, uh, prior to that, basically, nothing was getting done on the greenways and trails, we, we, we were sitting on around a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and was slowly chipping away at that, which is how we've been able to get some of these bigger projects, um, we do have, we do have some bonds that are in other capital reserve accounts, I can't tell you off the top of my head what they are right now, um, there's one for, not greenways, but parks acquisition, or something of that nature, and I think it has around three or four hundred thousand dollars in there, I think the intent of that was to buy future land that we could use for parks or greenway space, um, you'd have other, uh, other funds, Villachau, you know, Villachau was like a sign, capital project, they had like twenty thousand in it, um, there's a couple of other ones.
Well, let me ask a question, just to, to the council, uh, the mayor brought up something of saying that, you know, when this all started years ago, and he was saying five percent is going to do it, what?
Five cents.
Five cents, yeah, fine, not five percent, five cents, what do you think it'll be perceived better by the public, looking at, I'm saying, nickel and diamond upon this way versus going up and explaining to everybody that, you know, these roads, we've taken them over, and maybe we, what, what do you think the perception would be from the public from that standpoint, and really, because we need to.
Raise the tax.
I mean, I would have to pay a hundred dollars a year for my four cars that I have, then six hundred dollars for, for my house, for paying.
I, I think the question that needs to be asked, in fairness, um, again, the opinion of one, if I'm sitting in Marvin and I'm paying taxes, yet I happen to be on a road that's either private, and they make that choice their own, and they're never getting their roads done, or in your situation where it's on the list, but we're not sure when it is, and you've got other neighborhoods that not only have gotten turned over to the village, they're being serviced and maintained, whereas the non-service, I mean, that's why if there's a proposal, we're going to do this, let's really consider and do this all at one time, now, if you're going to do it in just a tax, you'd be moving the tax from six cents to probably eleven cents, and, and we're on getting the number real quick, it's if five, if one penny gives you a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, then another four cents or five cents is going to add the extra five hundred grand, um, I don't know what it's going to take to maintain the thirty miles of roads that we have, um, to Kim's point earlier, I know, but it's a, the total loss, but, but to your point earlier is, we looked at a bond, and one of the reasons we were concerned is would we, would we burn through that, because we'll get more money if we have thirty miles of roads, that's one thing, what would that be, and would we be able to spend that on the maintenance thing, but then, for that one time, bond versus a tax, you get, you know, you get all the roads done at the same time, or close to the same time, within relatively a couple of years, and then, then it becomes just a maintenance issue.
So, but you're talking about raising bond, so you're still, you're still, and the deficit.
But the deficit that we're looking at, this, this seven hundred thousand at its highest, that is over a period of the next seven years or whatever, but is that, how is, is that like that we're in arrears on maintenance, or are we talking about repaving additional roads at that point?
No, that's not, that's on any of these roads.
That's just maintenance.
That is just maintenance.
Not taking over any of the roads, you got a taxpayer paying.
But that's, but that's the accruals up to that point, what is it per year that we actually need to, with our current, what we have right now, how much does it cost us a year if we're doing it on a regular basis?
If we're on a regular.
On a regular basis, every year, what, what is the number every year that we would have to pay for maintenance?
The policy amounts range anywhere from, they were around a hundred to a hundred and fifty each per cycle, those are based on what was in the system in twenty nineteen, so we told them to push that back every other year, so we're looking at anywhere from a hundred to two hundred per year for policy.
But that doesn't, that doesn't include, like, when we take, you know, when we did here to zone, and firework, and woodland forest, that doesn't include, like, how much money we spent in that year for that, which was three hundred, you know, some thousand dollars?
Right, but there's a, but, so what I'm trying to get at is, is, we need a, we need a bucket of money now to catch up, but what I'm trying to figure out is, is where we need to be on par once we catch up, we're paying a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand a year for, for maintenance, basically, at, and we are getting how much from?
A hundred and forty thousand.
From power, a hundred and fifty, so, so we, we basically need to come up with an average of about twenty thousand before all the excellent that have come on, so we're probably somewhere seventy thousand dollars short of our annual maintenance money.
I, I will, I can give you one of this, if we took away the larger projects, um, the, the roundabout, the, the matches, the matches, the, the projects, why the, why the, if we took away those larger projects from a power bill standpoint, just for road resurfacing and maintenance, we would probably be okay, however, that doesn't suffice to say greenways, sidewalks, any of that stuff, we, we don't have a funding source for that, this is a terrible source.
And we're getting ready, we just heard Bjorn say today, we're going to have to do something at Marvin, and Joe Carr, and it costs.
Right, so, so basically, what we needed, we need a, a way to come up with probably somewhere around seventy hundred thousand dollars to get on par with our match for the, for the grant, and for the expenditures from the roundabout that we had to take from power bill, and upcoming projects possibly, so, I mean, maybe, maybe Bob's right, maybe, you know, uh, maybe we should go look towards just getting a, um, what do you call it, get one month sum and then get on par, a bond, and get on par.
I think, I think this.
Still going to have to pay that.
Yes, I understand, but what it is.
Funding source didn't pay that.
Okay, well, I understand what that is, but what, what the, from what Bob, I think, is saying, and I can see his point, is that from a public perspective, they're looking at paying for a specific thing, they know that, that what we're doing is, is, is paying for all these improvements that we've had to pay for, and it has gotten us behind our problem, gets us back to the maintenance issues, which we can handle, to keep everybody's, to keep the program going, keeping everybody's streets paved and maintained and all of that, and it's, they, you know, it's a finite amount of money that's got to be paid back, and it'll be added to their tax to pay that bond back, just like we do when we approve the school bonds, and the county asked for one, we know we're going to have to pay extra taxes to pay it back, but we also know what it's going for, and we vote whether or not we want to fund those things, whether it's important enough to the public to fund those things, so, maybe that is a, a better way to go there.
We, we, we assume that if we're sixteen miles away from the park, and we're thirty miles, and we get a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars worth of power bill, that would double to two, eight.
The, the power bill, the, the power bill formula is seventy-five percent population, twenty-five percent mileage, so, don't talk about this number, but it's about fifteen hundred per mile, so it's not too much, essentially, one other thing that I just thought of while we're sitting here talking about things, is we could rerun this model, taking all those larger projects out, and then looking at doing a referendum on greenways, or a G O bond, and that's, that's.
But then we still have to pay that, where are we going to put that money?
We would still have to pay that, yes.
And not, not exactly.
Come back and question, or question.
We have to pay it, not in a tax, so we would still have to have a funding source, so we're either.
Yeah.
It's six, one, or a hundred, or the other.
Well, right, but what, but what, it's not about the public perception, there, the, the, the public perception is, is they know that they're buying a product, and there is an end to that product, if we impose a vehicle tax, vehicle tags fee, they don't know that that's, that, that could be perpetual, that, that doesn't necessarily mean that that's going to be the end of it, with a bond, there's a set amount of money, it gets paid back, and that's the end of it.
If, if it gets through.
If it gets through, right.
But to the point, if I'm paying a vehicle fee tax, and I know my neighborhood is not scheduled to get on the margin roads until two thousand and twenty-nine, I'm paying every year, that vehicle tax, from a public perception, that doesn't seem.
But it's not, the twenty-five dollars isn't just there for that, it's like, how much tax do we give for roads?
Five dollars.
Five dollars for general government use, general government use, but, but then the other twenty dollars doesn't necessarily go to roads, correct?
Twenty dollars goes to roads, so the, the vehicle tax, we go to break, which are roads, we would have to figure out a funding mechanism to combine the revenues with power bills, but power bills.
So.
I've got a question, just real quick, so I'm looking here at nineteen dollars and eighty-seven cents, where's that going?
The what?
The nineteen dollars and eighty-seven cents.
That goes into your general revenues for a motor vehicle tax.
Okay, so.
It's, it's in, when we put it in the budget, it's just general revenues.
Okay, so.
We receive about sixty, seventy thousand dollars a year in revenues for motor vehicles.
If we don't earmark that for any road, we just see, that's part of the revenue, so what I would suggest, if we are going to do this tax, then it specifically targets roads, I mean, it's a direct correlation.
But then not going to split it up like that, it's not going to say Marvin Road.
No, no, I mean, it'll be an extra tax, but we somehow, we should be able to figure out what that amount is, and that be targeted towards.
The question here has to go towards maintaining, repairing, constructing, reconstructing, widening, or improving public streets in this theater town that do not form part of the state highway system.
All of it.
No, the five dollars can go to general, the twenty, and you can go up to thirty to...
It's like five dollars can go to the general operating, and, and it's not just the sidewalks, it's, I mean, it's something that has to be maintained, and, you know, Joe Carr, Tom, Tom Shore, they have to maintain the sidewalks there, and that's nobody's fault, you know, the village is right, so nobody lives on that, so there are certain things that we have to take care of, that we just have to take care of.
So, so just so we're clear, because I want to make sure everybody understands, the power bill, power bill has more flexibility in terms of what you can spend it on, you can spend it on plan, you can spend it on sidewalks, you can spend it on greenways, those sort of things, uh, engineering costs, the vehicle tax, they are very strict, and it has to be for vehicle tax, uh, vehicle traffic, so if we use the ton of roadway, uh, from a power bill standpoint, it includes other things, so when we say that this is going towards helping to fund some of the greenway sidewalks, that sort of thing, it's not necessarily the vehicle tax that's doing that, it's the allowance of us to free up power bill funds that we have.
So, so how think of this, we were, okay, twenty-four thousand in arrears for twenty-two, twenty-three, let me jump up to eighty thousand for twenty-three, twenty-four, then it goes to six hundred and eighty-three thousand.
Hold on, but hold on, let me get back to you a little bit, so you see twenty-two, twenty-three, you see that two hundred thousand dollars, just go ahead and make that three hundred thousand, so just go ahead and add, so now, so now our arrears is a hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Right, right, which, okay, but either way, so then you get the seventy-nine, then six eighty-three, then five eighty-five, if that's six eighty-three would be in arrears, that doesn't go away, because that just didn't get added onto the five eighty-five, or is I'm confused how, like, where does that money, if we're short six hundred and eighty-three thousand, that, that just the work doesn't get done, or is it pushed down?
We could, it's a, it's on the money for, yeah.
Yeah, see, that's what I'm saying, you, you, you're looking at these numbers, we're always going to be looking for the money, so the idea is, I think, that at this point in time, I think it would just piss people off, that the taxes are being raised at the worst possible time, if we can do it at this moment, I think, though, it doesn't, well, does it fix the problem? It's a hundred and forty-seven thousand, it's money, but does it really fix the problem? And then you've got somebody who is saying, okay, it's, I've been paying this thing for seven years, when are you going to come fix my road? I like the idea of, well, let's fix the road, I, and then get it right, by the way, he didn't make it any better by turning around and saying, well, you know, the asphalt's going to be ten percent higher, well, you'd be skipping, so it's never, we're never going to have enough, I guess, I don't mean to be blooming, doing, started off that way, I think this doesn't do anything, I think we need to do something more powerful, and, uh, I think we need to get them, people would, look, if, if people are, are being notified transparently, that years ago, you know, this was decided, we need to fix these roads, some of you really want your roads fixed, okay, well, this is what's going to do, whether it be a bond or whatever, and say, we're going to be coming out to your neighborhood and doing what we need to do, we're still going to be stressed on how to pay it back, but at least maybe with an impotent budget, we won't be eaten by inflation years down the road.
Well, okay, so we do a bond, so let's say, I, I'm assuming we do a bond this November, correct, okay, so let's say, I mean, we probably, I don't know, it's going to be pushed, we're going to be real pushed, so, so let's say we can't do it, so now it's the next November, which is the, the first time that we can do it, so we have no money, we're, we're a hundred and twenty-four thousand, you guys are going to watch in here. We're, we're a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar deficit, and we don't have the money to pay, so we're, we're pulling it from some other place that we earmarked or something else, so then, so let's say we get a, I don't know, a hundred thousand dollar bond, right? We still have to pay it back, how are we going to pay it back? If, so the G O. So, or we go away taxes in?
Probably, like Joe.
But like, five cents?
You're not going to issue a hundred thousand, because your, your cost of your G O bonds, you're going to have to get special binding, you still still got to go to election.
Okay, so how much are we going to do?
Uh, I would do several million if you.
Okay, several million dollars, so now.
I just, I mean, if you do less, but then your proportion of cost of issuance are going to be high, a million and a thousand, usually don't get bombed maximum for eight and a thousand.
Okay, so, how many?
We're going to about two million.
Now, let me ask you a question, over that period of time, the way real estate is going, the valuations are happening right now, okay, one, and of course, we had at one point sixty-eight homes, but, you know, is the valuations on the homes going to help us, just the natural order of things?
Yes, it will, but not enough to pay back the two million dollar loan.
So that's, so that's, so statutorily, it's every eight years, just to say about.
How, how long are bonds, do you think they are?
It, it, because Alex, when you, how long you can do it, ten, ten years, it varies. Well, now, just, just hear me out here, right, you say your term is going to be ten years, right, interest rate is going to be what? We're going to be low, and your general obligation is going to be your whole, except is there the most secure?
Is what?
Two or three, three percent, yeah.
So that's, that would, that would come to, did I say ten years, ten years, that would come to, if we could generate nineteen thousand dollars annually.
Nineteen thousand?
Nineteen thousand dollars to pay.
For two million dollars, over ten years? That's probably not.
Nineteen thousand.
That's probably, that's a lot.
How about Joe?
I need one.
So, so you're, you're, you're looking at two hundred and thirty grand a year.
Where are we getting two hundred and thirty grand a year?
Just keep any tax.
It's two cents tax.
And I think that's still, that's still cheap money. I, I honestly think this hundred and forty-seven thousand we're talking about from this source still doesn't fix the problem. That's the thing I'm pissed about. It doesn't fix the problem.
We can rerun, rerun the models and include some of the greenways in terms as well, and this road, and see how it merges things. We can do it a couple of different ways and see if, you know, if that's more viable, or if you guys want to go down the G M road.
I would, I would like.
We, so we have, so if we're going to adopt this, it has to be done by January first.
July.
Or, sorry, July.
Christmas. This year, no. If we're, we're really thinking about bonds, talk about, don't we need to really understand, I mean, go out? Because the more you borrow, the, the government deal you're going to make, I mean, two, three, you might want to say, two or three and a half, so. And look at the numbers on it, to have somebody give us some numbers so that we can, we're guessing the interest rate and everything. And just go say, all right, if we get a million, three million, five million, give us some ideas what the money's going to cost, what percent, what kind of terms you're going to give, and then we can talk about it and.
To your point, I, if we were going to do a bond, in fairness, not only would I take over the rest of the roads, but I would complete the, uh, the, the loop.
So, you might as well get twenty million dollars, because that's what I was asking.
I don't know.
So, we just use first-time line advisors to get the loan for here. It costs within, and it is not a G M, so it's much more detailed. Uh, it was about fifty thousand dollars.
That, that was, let me find that thing, is this is going to cost a lot of money to get the information.
Yeah, and that was just, just.
And what if it does not pass? We've now wasted a year and a half of getting some sort of revenue that we can do something with, and it doesn't pass. And we spent probably a hundred thousand dollars trying to get the information, and it doesn't pass.
I would say in terms of the timeline, if we're going to do a referendum this year, we will, we will bear with it. It's, it's, we might like, James.
It's, it's.
So, we'll bear with it. At this point, it hasn't been answered yet, because it doesn't, the problem's so short come up now. You know, in two years, we're going to be short four hundred thousand dollars.
It gives a smaller impact to the public now.
And then, if we got sunset on the next year, can you do what we can get the loan?
I mean, at least, I mean, at least we're doing something to start tricking away at it. And if we have to pull from other sources like the, our pot of money that Christine was talking about, we don't want to pull four hundred thousand apart. We don't want to pull a hundred thousand apart. Also, do you want me to go over the fund house, house that we have? Okay, so, assigned fund ballots, in village times, we have ten thousand dollars. In land acquisition, we have three hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Capital asset replacement, fifteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine. Leaving greenway expansion, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Uh, these are end-of-audit numbers, so if money is counted, this is just an audit first. Um, intersection, attractive, equipment, ninety-nine, nine. Uh, reserve, a hundred and sixty-one thousand, and future capital product, uh, projects, seven thousand nine hundred. So, this is basically our savings account for each of these assigned.
What is that, like, six, seven, eight?
Uh, seven, nine, seven.
If you're seeing me, I don't, you, I don't want, big people telling me what they might want, I don't want any money. When you do, uh, this is, uh, fifth third, you go right here and ask some out of the other.
It's, it is totally different. It's, 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 it's safe. It's just, it's. We, we can talk. We had somebody come in and walk us through the whole thing, and it was, it's expensive. And first time, walking through getting that money, that costs fifty thousand dollars to do it. You're not going to walk me and walk up to the, the number and say, hey, I'm going to get a G M, what's, what's the interest rate going to be? It's expensive. I mean, where we live, it's just different. The, um.
I walk.
Is it possible to put it to a vote, so you can get the vote and then go do it?
No.
You gotta, you gotta get the funding, and then once it doesn't appear, it's spent a hundred thousand dollars. I'm not saying we don't do it, but I'm saying, I don't think it's going to be, it's going to happen, two or a hundred, so much. It's going to pass. I mean, we all know, I mean, we don't get out and go to this meeting, here.
Right.
So, if somebody's like, I don't want to do a bond, because it's going to raise my taxes four cents, because essentially, that's properly, I mean, you know, to Joe's point, if we're going to do it, the bond will just do it, invite the bullet, figure out what all roads are going to cost, where all the loops, where all the greenways, where, I mean, that, at that point. I think the greenway match plan was, it was like twenty-five million, I think, not something like that? Twenty, twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five, okay, so at that point, you know, we've got, you know, however much, and we're going to go up on twenty-two, twenty-three million dollars. Still got to pay back. We're going to have to raise taxes. And I'm much rather start paying twenty-five dollars for each of my cars instead of, you know, going up to fifteen or twenty cents.
Let me ask a question. We did it where we did raise the property taxes, but then we just, you know, it's like every other household, okay? Uh, you know, we're, we're not going to get the finest, whatever, one, whatever it is, we'll, we'll get something cheaper, you know? So, the, the idea is that you look at this, can we supplement, because it's only a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, although I know we get the power bill, it kind of matches, so we get it. But we, can we start going into this to make up for lost time? Again, I'm going to say, people are going to say, what are you doing? We're going to transfer, like we have, thank goodness. And, and we're going to say, this is why it's stolen, you know? And they're going to say, all right, I'll fight the bullet. When are you coming to, when are you going to do my, my street? And I just think it's, I don't think it's going to be looked. I know why we would do it, why we would do it, and why we were talking about it, but I, I think the public, it's just a bad time to do this. Uh, I, I'd rather say, let me tell you a story, you know, long ago, about roads and sixteen miles, and we would like to do a lot more, and, you know, you see the roundabout, maybe we can go ahead and get more roads. We're going to have to maintain them. So, to maintain our roads in Marvin, there's going to be a tax increase. And at least if they, maybe it's more simplistic, they can see it and go two cents more, three cents more.
Because it's not fair for us to work, because my house is like, you, you know, less, worth less than somebody else's house. So, I can pay less than somebody else who has to pay more. And, and your whole point of, we're not going to get the bus, all the one, we're going to get such a pool of community in North Carolina. I don't think that's going to fly, but it's just not. Like, it is twenty-five dollars a car. Like, I, I mean, don't go to Starbucks for a week.
Well, I know, but I, but I, but I.
I think I made a point around, and the random number was, yeah, we did a twenty-year payment upon, let's say, a, a, a penalty tax. And just say, in, in twenty.
So, there's seven, six hundred dollars.
Hey, I think I was.
Paying a hundred dollars.
So, you're paying tax on.
It's a little more. Does that make you six hundred instead of a hundred, but I would bank it?
Six hundred dollars, so. One cent, one cent. If you, if you owned a five hundred.
Oh, sorry, I said six cents, so it's seven cents, so I'm paying.
But you're only paying.
Paying a hundred dollars.
One hundred dollars, you're paying the assault.
Right, so it'd be the same thing.
Yeah. But I'm saying.
For me, it would be the same.
Yeah, but it's perceived, uh, it's perceived differently, but.
But, but paying it, it's always a problem to this point, because if, if the one sentence. Great, if it doesn't pass, then that's.
Then we're back to square one, I mean, they know.
We have to work that.
Well, then, where we're there, then we're, we're there in a Mexican standoff and sit there and say, okay, we tried to do this because we want to get the roads right in Marvin, so here's the next solution. We're going to start raising, you know, put twenty-five, thirty dollars, go put thirty dollars on it. But I mean, at least, you know, I think at least from a perception standpoint, it looks like we're, and, and like I said, it gets the thing done. It gets it fixed. I, I, I'm still looking at this and going, as good and clever as this idea is, after seeing these numbers, I'm going.
So, why not do it this year and next year and start getting the money? Because again, we're going to have a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar deficit next year, and the bond's not going to be done until the next year anyway, so then if we, if it passes, then take it away, then stop it. At least we should be away with it. Put the sunset at two years, and if we get the bond, then it's definitely gone, and if it's not, you just take the sunset away.
And I made your question, um, when am I going to get it done? I don't think, if you got the money, you don't go through, do they want to, you set up a schedule, and you've got
No, exactly.
Ten thousand houses right here, and over five years, you do two thousand houses a year. And, and, or ever, you know, you have a schedule, whatever it is, so.
The same thing with the downwind.
If you get a lot of sun, you do it all in today's dollars and not spread it out, because you're going to.
That's what scares me.
Yeah, you're going to spend a lot more stretching it out, because you've got the money, you do it now.
I mean, people see stuff happening, they're going, wow, okay, they're really being proactive. They put up a village hall, they're working on the heritage district, you know, the thing, all the positive things have been done.
At this point, Eric's also being hit the.
Well, I know.
Set up a, being that.
I just think, I just think that, and I'll add this one more thing to it, as much and transparent as we've been about waste removal, it still took people by surprise, and, and the, the poor office was getting an undate with phone calls. I just don't think this is going to help anything, but.
The, 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 the trash, I mean, people who don't know about that, it is their own fault. I'm sorry, I was saying, you have to.
I agree, I agree.
It is your own fault, and you have no idea what is going on in the town around you.
Agreed.
Figure it out. I'm so tired of us giving out so much information that we're literally walking you up to the river and putting your head right in the water, and you won't drink the water. Like, it is ridiculous. I am so tired of people in this town, unless it's in their backyard, then they start freaking out. And we're saving people money on trash too, so the money, the hundred dollars that I'm saving, I'll put more of my minimum tax for my whole cars, and I'll wait until twenty, twenty-nine, get my roads back.
So, I think the compromise would be, if there was a vote on the, and, and, and set it at two years and let's start really exploring the, the bond issue and see if that's something, and, you know, get some sort of feelers out there to find out if people really understand what we're asking. I would recommend, again, we have to do numbers on taking the rest of the sixteen miles over, whatever it is, the maintenance, everything that's going along. We generate a hundred and forty thousand for the next two years. We get the bond, that goes away. If we don't get the bond, we at least have some money going towards it, because if.
Yeah, if we do this for the next two years, that covers our deficit for the next two years. The big deficit's going to be when that five hundred and twenty-four thousand, which is due for the match, comes into play. That's our big, big gift.
Oh, yeah.
That's the guy that we got to plan for in the next three years, and that's, but the rest of it's doable up until then, so we're, we're covered with the.
Doable to be.
Yeah, it's, it's absolutely doable with the other taxes.
And I mean, it's not like this is like abnormal, like, there are lots of municipalities that do this, that have much higher tax rates.
Way, yeah, way higher tax rates.
And they don't live in those weird towns in North Carolina.
Well, do we want to take a vote for this, or for the discussion, or put it to a vote? Either, it'll be decided. And if you want to make a, um,
amended motion?
A motion, amended motion?
Kim, would you like to amend your motion?
Sure, I'll, I'll amend my motion to approve, between about doing the tax for the next two.
With the sunset clause.
With the sunset clause in two years, so that would be July or June thirtieth, twenty, twenty-four.
Unless, unless expressly.
Unless expressly amended by.
Uh, by an affirmative village council.
By an affirmative village council.
Of two years.
If we start this process, and if we want to do a bond, then again, we start exploring that, what that looks like, but at least when I decide to inform our council next year.
Question, um, so with a sunset clause of two years, unless, what's the word?
Unless, unless.
Unless expressly extended or renewed by an affirmative vote of village council.
Unless expressly extended or.
Depending on if we were able to bond or.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, that way you're.
But I think the people, once they get down and get deep dive into the numbers, and they see, okay, that was decided years ago, you only got half of the town that has the roads and roads. We'd like to see if we're all paying essentially the same rate, then we all have that same benefit. We all have the benefit of waste hauling, we all have the benefit of whatever service we provide, that should include, um, roads, and, you know, and if you get the right message out there, it, it could potentially, and at the end of the day, it could only be a one cent tax if we did a twenty-year bond, so. But there's a motion on the table, Director. You good with the motion?
Yes, Chaplain, for the ordinance, for the draft ordinance, does that terminology need to be, need to be added on to section two?
Yeah, I was going to add, um, insert it with a section two that will say the annual municipal tax, the status year-end shall automatically terminate on July, I think, on June thirtieth, twenty, twenty-four, something like that, twenty, twenty-four, unless expressly extended or renewed by an affirmative vote of village council.
Maybe twenty-five.
And then the new section three will be the full course in effect in July first. We'll add a section two.
Okay, I'll have to get with you on that wording.
Or we want to put, or we can't, we have to explain why we're in this situation.
Yeah, we, we can take, we'll take care, we can figure that out.
Yeah, why, if, if it does get approved, why we do this, you know, and, yeah. There's going to be a lot of messaging that needs to go out, and why we are doing it, so.
People won't agree.
Right, right. All right, further discussion on the motion. All is, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jamie?
Nay.
All right, we have four ayes and one nay.
Okay, let's see, yes, yes, oh, yes.
And can we, can I get a motion to direct staff to oversee the general obligation bond group and then start that process?
Motion.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. I mean, if we're, if we're going to a vote, this, this is the.
I just, I just think, whatever that number is, I want that bond to include my.
That may, we can, we can do.
Do you have a motion?
So, you just want us to research the general obligation bond?
Yeah. Christine.
Okay, um, that's a quick reset.
Does she need, does she need a motion for?
Give me a motion.
Just for a second, you can just.
Yeah.
I remember an password. Two-minute break.
I'll be back, I don't have a hundred.
Who? Did you make that motion for recess?
Yeah.
Joe doesn't have a vote.
I agree, it was probably, but I don't know, yeah, I like your idea. I just think, and then, and I feel honestly that some of the names on there.
Okay, we're in recess. You don't need a motion, but.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, we have, um, new business.
Nope.
No. Oh, discussion, more than, discussion of twenty-two, um, market day celebration. Eric, you're in.
Derek's not here, so I'll just kind of take this over, and everything's going as planned. We have, um, incident action plan, basically emergency plan being scheduled for all of next week. Uh, that will through any of the leaders that are associated with some of the settlements. Um, I'll turn it over to second to speak numbers, but we're doing good. Everything's going to work out. I think shirts are actually scheduled to begin the next week, so, all of that, the, the.
Hold on, do we even have, because I asked for, I asked the P R meeting, it's not there, we don't choose that.
We just put them online yesterday.
Okay, I would like this emailed out, because I know I have most people that need them, like, the stuff, and I would ask Derek to email this out when we got this.
I'll, I'll, I'll add that to the action. I'm with, I'm, I'm sure Jill sent out, um, the posters again, and we can send out maps too.
Well, I'll send it, send it to Derek.
Yeah, well, if you're lucky, I think, I think Derek, she was waiting on, uh, the, yeah.
And what I was asking, I got some Derek, I, I just wanted his name and phone number and calls and everything.
So, you're Derek's favorite person right now. She's your Derek's favorite person right now.
I wanna, I mean, who else? Jamie?
Um, we received around thirty thousand dollars in, um, sponsorship money, so that's great. So far, we're doing well with the budget for market day, um, we, we're able to get pony rides on the schedule, which is great for the kids, so thank you for everyone for contributing to that. Um, the band is up, I don't know if you all read my mail, but the annual opening, they're booked, um, everything looks really good. So far, I've received, um, about thirteen hundred dollars for the five K one round signups. I don't know how many that actually is, but the five K signup itself is thirty dollars, so we've already received thirteen hundred dollars in for signups for those, so.
Do you have any spots we have?
About a hundred left.
Yeah, that's enough.
Okay. Yeah, I think we have a hundred left.
Yeah. Um, I forget how many, um, signups were available for the five K, that was a very.
It's, it's a hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty, yeah, that's what I think. So, yeah, I think it's going really well. Any questions, anyone else?
No, good job.
Thank you.
I've had people say to me, really, you've got all this going on, and this is the first time? This is like something you should have been five years into, that's what should be going on. Like, this is, like, how are you gonna top this next year, or five years from now?
Jamie's got it.
Christina, what do you need for last night's meeting? Um, we have, from staff, well, we've kind of blocked off all the expectations for next week, so we want the audience on that. So, um, if y'all can just maintain availability, we'll be depending, I know Kim and I went shopping, and got some baskets and stuff, and I'll tell that stuff for us next week, not the final part this week. I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of last minute running around, seeing what's in the yard, seeing sign sales somewhere, or if y'all mind helping out here and there.
So, in regards to that, I was talking to the street, the, uh, car guy, and he was, and he had, they had signs that basically talk about it's the band, they, they put out, and he was asking if it's possible to put those out in the roundabouts. But I know we have a sign ordinance, I'm not sure what to call it, our own sign ordinance.
We're gonna ask the citizens what they.
Well, John, he has his own first call, he has like three or four signs, he'd like to get the message out. They usually put one in nicely as you're driving by, this is, you know, um, market day, so he was just, I saw office, checking signs around. We have them today.
Yeah, Derek's got the numbers for him.
Sixty-seven cars, I know we have over seventy cars, and we get a lot, they, uh, we are still looking for, um, raffle gifts if you have any. So, uh, but it should be a good, good show, they're, they're gonna do something with the, uh, color guard there, the presentation and stuff, so it'll, it'll be a fun event. Anyway, um, but that, that's on very well, but I didn't know if I needed permission to say, yeah, go ahead and throw it on.
Well, they're not around that, so you, they haven't asked me, or they can just follow suit.
Yeah.
Couldn't help that.
Election, but I never said it, I don't know, but election or not, I'm, I'm, I'd say consider it, but we do have a sign ordinance in.
We do.
Technically, we are probably, because we didn't approve, but we signed it.
You don't, you don't have to for any type of events that is either, I think it's within thirty days of the event, banners and stuff are temporary, they don't require any type of permit.
They have the telephone up there.
I mean, I could tell you.
So, I should say, right from the Monday morning, Christina and staff about this incident action, whatever, but I would, I, my next week is blocked off, so if you guys, if somebody's not available, just let Christina know, like, I can't do anything on Tuesday, or whatever, just let Christina know, otherwise, like, I don't partake in any way, it's gonna be basically on call, so if you guys can.
So, I think, is, is anyone, so back to, uh, our, uh, preacher? Did they ever have a house, I don't see any.
I, I emailed him back when they were talking about it, but I never heard anything.
Yeah, that's what I heard, and the only one we're having here is on the halls, nothing else, Jean, is the.
I still not had confirmation, and, and actually, it looks that he wanted me to order, he still hasn't got.
Oh, I'll tell you that.
So.
We, um.
Put it towards Rose.
A representative from the Union County Library Foundation is also gonna be on site, giving out information about the new library.
Asking for money?
I don't think they're asking for money, but we'll see.
Well, this is our.
Library Foundation.
This is our.
I'm surprised about Jean Stowe, though, I thought, I thought we had secured him.
Put that on Sunday's list and follow up. Anything else, Marvin Day, move this along to third couple, so I would hope he does.
No, I'm not.
No, that's, that's. Yeah, we're, we're taking them, so we're gonna need to get, try to get them. Um, I think I should leave one, but I, I listen to the farmers and.
Oh, do you need, um, did that run for something?
No, I was thinking about South Park, can, can somebody help me remember, pick up the rock presenter, and see if they already have her, to release?
Yeah.
Somebody can help me, yeah, remind me, because they sent about a week before the event. So maybe by now, though, they have something ready to get.
I can tell Jamie, right, and ask her to.
So the next week, they said, you can, you need a call bell?
For visiting.
She won't answer, really.
Can you, can you, can you help with, uh?
Old Jamie.
I don't have any assignments. I thought I was helping you.
She sits on the board.
Oh, are you?
Yeah, that's what I thought I was doing. If someone told me that I was gonna help you with car show, like.
If you're, you're a nice person, then.
I would be at the farm, reporting, and then I would be going to the day, and then I would be to the major duty.
You are, it's noon to one-twenty, it's a very short time.
And then Joe and I.
Hour and twenty minutes, please.
Then Joe and I follow in behind her.
You guys, I think, it should be Ken, should be Kim and Jamie, then it should be Wayne and Andy.
One twenty to two forty, right?
Mm-hmm, you're, yeah, one twenty, two forty, and then Bob and Joe at the end.
What, what is it?
You guys are at the end, so you'll be from, uh, two forty until four.
Oh, okay.
It's an hour and twenty minutes, please.
I'll be late.
You guys will be giving tours of our lovely facility to anyone who shows up.
So, I'm unavailable from one twenty.
Yeah, Joe's gonna be pointing out the sink in there.
Is that the hour that you put up the trim? They need to clean before then, are they, if they come in?
We haven't secured a cleaning service yet, that's on our list.
Oh, well, that, that's really done before.
About the livers on the outside, the spive livers, and everything.
We're taking volunteers to do that.
Please show up with a pressure washer.
I don't do windows, sorry.
We're gonna. Y'all are available all next week, so, I mean, I'm happy to, you know, we're just snakes involved, I'll do spiders.
Yeah, I ain't getting near a snake. Look at that.
So, Joe.
One twenty to two forty, I have my keep, so I will be available.
I'm your keeper for Marvin Day, I'll keep your own schedule.
All right, next up, um, consider the resolution withdrawing your funding to provide off-duty law enforcement coverage.
Marvin Road, New Town, which we need to advertise.
I know.
It's getting light.
Jamie, I think this was, uh, I don't know if it was your discussion point, or if you wanted to take this, or is this something you can feel very strong about?
I do, again, I'm, I'm gonna be the first one to, to say, I would love a bullet. But I also would like to have the power of the decision made.
I, I mean, I, I agree with you there, but if, if chap Tom High is spending this much money, and nobody is helping us out with it, literally nobody is helping us out with it, but if somebody dies, someone feels like, I, I'm not gonna do it myself.
Well, I think my, my, my optics in some way, if the, I think our bill is, you know, how much we spend, the money just to keep everybody else in the county safe, then I'm gonna say, why hasn't everybody else pitched in?
We've asked.
I know you've asked, but I, like, there's a, in the discussion, uh.
And I'll get this up.
So, so, or.
Thank you, Jamie.
Jamie, you sound horrible, Jamie, I can't hear you.
So. So, so basically, let me ask, uh, looking at this, we're just wanting to remove law enforcement altogether? Okay, um, can we put up three stop signs?
No.
Um, Christina, you sent out emails and letters requesting to the county, Black Dog, what is it, what's the chapter? Did you hear back from anyone?
I, I did not send a letter, I just sent email, um, I heard back from others. I did that, right. Black Dog discussed it, they said no, Union County discussed it, they said no, did you, I did not hear back from the others.
Um, so, if we, um, again, I, I kind of agree with what Joe was saying a little bit earlier about these roundabouts, and why are we making everything so convenient, you know, for people to get through and flow through our town? You know, if we make it darn right miserable, uh, we remove them, uh, law enforcement, uh, and the traffic is backing up all the way down into Mecklenburg County, you know, so be it. Um, I, I don't see what, I mean, versus now, we need to save money, we need to take care of the roads. You know?
Fifty thousand, forty seven thousand.
Now, people, the optics will be, people will say, now, wait a minute, you guys saying, okay, I'm gonna try to take, you know, address everything on the survey, and what are you doing about traffic? You know, our reply is, well, the roundabout was here, supposed to be here two years ago, we're really trying. I mean, I, it's, it's out of our hands, and we just heard now it's August of two thousand twenty-three, really? Okay?
Two months every time they tell us.
This, I, I mean, this might give a reality, I, I, I don't think we need to make it convenient for anybody up until then, you know what I mean? So in other words, if we can save money. I, I would wanna campaign, if we took the money away, I would wanna campaign with this approval of the sign of the QR code, said, here's who you call. Yeah, exactly, not really. You want this, you know, and, and just say, look, here's the people that are, have held this up for years. E O T, county hasn't offered anything, and no other town has offered to participate, if we have that, and it's, I don't know how I would do it.
We need to ask the county some to approve anything, and Marvin Day never.
Well, I, I would tell you, I agree with this, we don't save any thousand right here, I'm very confident, so.
But, but we, but we, I'm sorry, since we didn't enter that level, we would have done that, I mean, I'm sorry, it's, it's political. We, we have, listen, I'm all for it, I think, I think that's a great idea, put a QR code, we list every.
Yeah, seriously, yeah.
I would, it's amazing.
Yep.
Well, we're gonna piss the county off, and we will never get anything, and we're just gonna steal together.
And they're gonna.
Go vote.
Hey, guys.
What's that, Jamie?
Yeah, I'm having some, there's some internet issues, I don't know what's going on, if it's, or if it's something there. But I, I just, I, yeah, I just wanna go back to the one comment that, for me, voting for this, I have to vote for keeping the, keeping the sheriffs there for another year, and we can get this done, because I don't want, I don't want sixteen, seventeen, eighteen year old high school student that doesn't, just learning how to drive, get sideswiped or something. We have a great reputation of keeping people safe because of the things we've done. I don't wanna wipe out, that's something we don't do, and I, I'll leave it up to y'all, but, but.
Well, we don't have to, we go around and struggle, um, I'm fine keeping it as it is for now, um. Where you at? How, how much money, like, take the money away?
I, I mean, I can't give money, because again, I don't, I mean, yes, it does have to do with the flow of traffic and not having stuff back up, but I think it's more of a safety issue than anything else, and I think that's probably our number one priority, is safety and safety. And I can't, I just, as much as, fuck me, I'm walking, I want to, I want to put up a sign, and I want, I mean, I do, but I can't take this money, I can't.
Then when we, they asked us about some of this other stuff we wanted to do, they said, well, we're using money to make it safer for everybody else, and just hold county here, and we're, we're taking their tax money to do math.
Again, it goes either way.
I mean, yes, I mean, I, yes, I am anything that's safe for, you know, the sixteen year old who's driving down the road, and, you know, who's just learning, you know, to drive, and, yes, I am taking your tax dollars, even if this kid doesn't learn, because I cannot have that, if I can't have that, anybody will have it. I, I just, I can't, I want to, I want to, but I can't.
Does anyone wanna take it to a vote, or, or we?
We can take it to a vote.
Okay.
I, I think so.
So, someone make a motion to consider, um.
I think you made a motion in the affirmative end of against, because people do that, too. Maybe that was one of them.
So, do you wanna take that off our motion? Tell us if the majority does not want to do it. That's what we're just trying to show, so. We did this, this doesn't come up anytime, we got a lot of time, because we shot a long hit for the summer anyways, right? Oh, no, sir, hold your right, we can take it off, if you guys don't take it off for two months.
Take off.
Go ahead. Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to withdraw annual funding to provide off-duty law enforcement coverage at the Marvin Road and Newtown Road intersection as presented. Further discussion? All in favor? You have one? Aye? Nay? Nay.
Could, aye. Guys, I'm sorry, can, Bob, can you read that, can you get to the microphone, read that again, please?
Sure, um, I'm making a motion to approve the resolution to withdraw funding, annual funding, to provide off-duty law enforcement coverage at the Marvin Road and Newtown Road intersection as presented. All in favor? So we have one aye, four nays, three nays, Jamie, what's your vote?
No.
Okay, so. Four. Okay. Okay, so we'll move on, um, and if that's, something must have happened to make that come back up since it went down as a negative, that's why I was trying to avoid that, so we could bring it up again. Um, next up, review and consider adoption of thousands from the four twelve, make two books per session.
So, last month, you all did not have a work session at which you would have normally reviewed these minutes, just to keep these minutes coming out on a regular schedule, I'm asking you to just review and adopt tonight.
Second.
No changes?
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Next up, this is gonna do village hall tree and landscaping rooms.
I'll be kind of brief on this, basically, this has been, I, I think, brought to you guys during your, the last meeting during the planners update, it was directed for staff to start working with P R G to do this little kind of landscaping of the natural swell out here, kind of beautify that as well, and still channel the stormwater. Um, P R G seemed very receptive of it, and basically, I think, part of this update is there will be some costs associated with material and, um, just the overall kind of, of that. I think in that rough estimate that Keith from, uh, the urban park for the county, I think estimated, what, twenty thousand? Um, and that doesn't include a few other things. So basically, like I said, tonight's just kind of being brought to your guys' attention to still proceed, I'm not really sure where budget-wise this would go. So basically, like I said, tonight's just kind of being brought to your guys' attention to still proceed, I'm not really sure where budget-wise this would go, or if it falls under something that, um, uh, would already be approved under, like, a line item under Derek's, Derek's budget, but other than that, Kim, is there anything you want to add?
No, I mean, it's, something needs to be done, and it's literally like right in front of the building, like, it is almost dead center, so it will look beautiful, and it will basically come from, no, just one direction. Now, is it two directions, and it'll tee kind of?
The natural, it does kind of tee at the tree up there, but at the same time, like, it's the intent would be all channel that, I mean, make it, it would still be look natural, it's not to change any type of the natural flow, it's just to kind of beautify that already natural swell up there.
Yeah, so.
Well, it's not a set, it's actually functional.
It is functional, though it will also.
Right, it will also be a set, but I want, I, because I was the one that came up with this idea originally, and I wanted the public to understand that what we, what, the, the main purpose of this is not just for a set.
No, it's, it's.
It's for, um.
Drainage.
It's to control the drainage coming from DOT ditch that dumps on Village Hall property, in plain terms. We have deep ditches that go around the Village Hall to direct the water.
Where's it coming from?
And see DOT ditch, alright, so, the idea is, from my experience, is to find ways to absorb as much water as possible, so that you don't have the drainage issues, you don't have the excessive drainage issues. So, my initial thought was, originally, to put at least a weeping willow or something, and then after speaking with the urban forester, we came up with an idea of being a little bit more elaborate, which would also soak up a lot more of the water. Um, it will be a very aesthetically pleasing thing, but it is very much in the form of function versus the aesthetics. But I just wanted to make that very clear, that we're not just spending a bunch of money to just make it pretty, we're making, we're, we're using money to make it functional.
Well, it's going to keep a lot of water on the wall.
That's the greatest benefit of it.
Christine, do we have any, do we have any more contingency money for Village Hall? Jamie, you know, we're going to do that, with these, most recent, okay, so, I know it's not very close. Oh, my, oh, okay, so I think Derek is going to, correct, I think Derek is going to start trying to get some numbers rolled up or some bids from different states, and I think Park River Greenway, one of the board members is going to try to sketch out, um, kind of a map.
Yeah, we're, we're not, I mean, this is just a landscaping thing, so it's not going to require any type of, like, engineered plans. Um, we would want to know kind of just the flow of, the general look of it, and potential where PRG would kind of come in, where, like, the plant estimates, that stuff that was recommended by Keith, but at the same time, PRG, I mean, there might be certain species, or what I mean, however, that PRG recommends. Um, but, but ultimately, like, the, the goal here is to do this as cost-effectively as possible um, with the resources we have here on staff, and outside of having to buy the material and the plants, because like, the labor, for example, would be something maybe potentially done by, uh, the, Derek's, um, staff, as well as the designs kind of being done with PRG and stuff, so.
Well, there will be some tree expense, because there are, are, distant trees are going to have to be removed, or not, intentionally not removed until this project is implemented.
Okay, and we did, I did bring up to Keith, um, about, um, because some of the larger settings are going to, they're going to be heavy, similar to our machinery, and we talked about how to protect the tree systems out there, or kind of some of those trees that we're trying to protect, so we've gone over all of that, so, we've had that conversation, um, I, I think, obviously. We're not going to do anything right now, we're going to just continue to move this project forward, get costs, get design, all that stuff, and then try it and implement it at all. Do you guys care, like, what we plan, like, as long as it's within, like, what Keith is suggesting, do you guys, like, have a?
The only thing I suggested. The only thing I suggested was a weeping willow, um, if they prefer river birds to a weeping willow, it really doesn't matter, I just, there needs to be a, a, a tree that, that does, they absorb the, the most amount of water, and that's the anchor plant, and then Keith agrees with that, so whether they, whichever species that they decide to deal with, but as long as the major intent is that there is a tree that is going to absorb a lot of water, along with the other plants.
I mean, if we just, if Park River Greenway can just complete that whole bowling, and, um, break back every other, like, maybe like this, maybe do a this, like, as long as you guys, like.
I just want to look at the overall plan on the sun and see if there's anything that fits, that might catch my eye, but other than that, that's, that's, let them, let do their, their job.
So, yeah, we'll continue proceeding, and I, when it comes down to actually having, like I said, this was just a preliminary, and kind of actually getting some of the funding, we'll, I'll have to get with the necessary parties and do go from there, but yeah, basically, I just want to make sure we're still on board with it and got the okay to move forward.
So you want a plan for the fall, to actually, okay.
But we're, get the design out, figure out what the plan is going to be, and figure out, I mean, I think, you know, I think you guys secure some estate company or a safety, like, so.
And I'll probably be more available on the fall, too, when he knows, so.
And we, and we'll still get quotes for consideration, but that's still something that we can make that determination, slash consult with Derek and see if that's something his staff can do.
Okay, this is on the rock, though.
I think we have parts of work. So, we have a discussion of bourbon tasting?
Oh, that's cute.
Who's that? Oh, that's me, okay, so, we're talking about this at Park River Greenway, um, I'm going to admit, um, the bourbon beer tasting is far.
Oh, she's a big breakboard.
Bourbon is really happy.
Well, it's certainly a good word, whatever, um, doing something at a park, you know, charging, you know, a fee to help members participate, we would get, you know, different sponsors, um, Bob, I think I'm actually going to talk to another, uh, one of the local, um, alcohol supply source, and, uh, said, he would be absolutely, more of a little just out in terms of kind of directing us, but this is not something we're working on doing at, like, the fall, is if you guys are going to make more time for that, so we're working on maybe fall, like, twenty-three, to kind of start the place process. I just wonder, you guys who are on board are interested in doing something like this?
It's a draw, and I just run the restaurant over in the South Park Mall, where the, um, area is, where they have the symphony and all that kind of stuff. They had, um, you know, bourbon with wine, bourbon wine tasting, beer tasting, they had all of that, we drew a graph, I mean, they did charge him sometimes fifty dollars a head.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it could be a fundraiser, but.
Yeah, they're there, yeah.
Okay, so you guys are on board with it, now I want to keep going on a whole, we're trying to.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Anything with the public?
Next up, we have a discussion of angel tree bourbon.
Oh, see, okay, so we were all talking about this at Park River Greenway, about having an angel tree here at Village Hall. I feel like we talked about this last year, but maybe, you know, we kind of raised a party, but we need, I think, to see how many Christmas here are, I think, who it is. Um, they have, you know, a boatload of families that need assistance for holidays, so we're thinking about setting a tree here at Village Hall, like, maybe they're, they're, they're obviously advertising it really well, having people to come in, you know, take, take the tags, and then at our tree lighting, in December, we will have all those people that hold names bring it, and then we can have any Christmas here there, so that will draw more people for that event as well, we can do that, so I want to see if you guys are supportive of that, because if they're not, you're going to screw this. What's that? You in?
I'll go with this.
Correct, I'll go with this, okay, perfect, awesome, we will have a little bit of a department.
Alright. Um, next up, discussion of Village Hall grading and lawn maintenance.
Christine, I'm good on that.
That was.
I forgot, I started adding, as mentioned, the items, with, all the, all the items for Village Hall, okay.
Okay, next up, discussion of consideration of Village Hall position and might see why they.
That's you. That's you.
Present to you.
Plant. Fast forward.
Yeah, um, what's interesting is, when Kim and I were just going through this, not knowing, we ended up picking identical, in the same family um, that we have currently, right now, so everything should match, and kind of figure out what things would look like, and.
How many do you need, and it's pricing, and the gas is falling, and the order, and, and it's cheap on the free then, and.
So you two picked those out?
So these, these are the lamp posts that you picked, and we just went up to the.
Sorry, there's always still work, it's up there.
But he's got a policy, or is it?
Yes, oh, that is. So you need that, his, yeah, his son-in-law just asked, which we just, is a.
Yeah, where does, is it Rachel Kim's?
Wife's father.
Yeah, that was that one.
So this pedestrian lights?
Okay, so, now, this is just for Village Hall.
This is just for Village Hall, we have to think how we need to market it. I did, we did, but it's quite deep.
Let me guess, it would just be.
No, no, we thought, we thought we could find some better places, and then we're going to go back to what it is.
Alright, so, uh, so you addressed the lamp posts and the walk lights.
Yep.
Um, have you looked, are we just doing a, I'm assuming these are all just iron looking, black iron looking? Alright, so we also need to get the spotlights for the building, so they'll have this black spotlight.
I think it's, uh, you need a.
Simple black ones that shine light.
We're overlaying the building, and then up top as well, so I'm going to have to get better for it, so I'll just have to prep these.
Are you just on the roof? Do you think the windows are?
No, I don't do windows.
Why don't you, what else do you need, do you need spotlights, are they all more than that? Can we do that after Monday?
Yes, um, my question to you all, all council members, are we doing one parking lot or both parking lots?
Because it's two separate systems, and it's, it, it's.
Well, we're doing that, it's like twenty-three minutes, right?
Something like.
How are you doing that, like?
Yeah, so we're, we're like three grand.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, that's a horrible life, but.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's like, it's about three grand at the park for the materials for that, so somewhere, or, or was it three to thirty-five, or somewhere, what we just said. So we're doing all of that, okay, I just want to. Well, I'm glad we didn't get the lights on yet, because you're hiding the place, one of you. The tree? Yeah, tree top. No, it's up near where the path lights are going to come out, on that side, to the path to the. I know.
They're, 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 they're sad, they're, they're, that's why they have a big, uh, tree, too, right? Alright, um, next up.
My kids are really bummed.
Oh, next up, revenue cabinet, Village Hall.
Yeah.
What do you want to do now, I'd say we can't do it, sometimes it's always going to be here. We can't do it, we can't do one thing, and all people are stuck together to do that.
Why don't you do it, um, next council meeting, well, the council meeting, you?
No, I'm going to work the next Saturday, so, that's how we're doing it, anyway. You know, not, not. I want, I want this to be like where we send out invitations, like, to the other counties, or like officials, I mean, this needs to be better than the groundbreaking, the groundbreaking is weird, I mean, not what we did, the attendance is weird.
Can, can we have a food truck where a guy comes and steals food from? Oh, yeah, I remember, okay.
It needs to be like, I mean, like, don't we have to say, like, oh, the big ribbon, the giant cinders, like, it needs to be an event, it needs to be something that we need to invite people to.
We don't want to wait too long, because then it'll be just old books.
Yeah, but nobody can.
We might have to pluck by that time.
We might have to pluck by that time. I mean, we need time to also get Village Hall situated, too, like, we can't be giving tours with boxes in the halls and.
Christmas trees.
Christmas trees in the back room, missing, missing tiles in that front room.
No trailer.
No trim on the doorways. Not completed building, yeah, I agree.
We have a plan for all the documents and the boxes.
So, is anyone doing anything, I'm, you want to do it in the fall, September?
I think summertime, people are going to be.
Well, it's hot.
It's hot.
No, we'll be inside.
And outside.
You cut outside?
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be a kind of bolt, so I would say, when the weather is a little bit cooler, maybe, um, or at least in the evening, when it's a little cooler, so it's not.
Do you want it during a weekend?
Don't we do a fall town hall?
A weekend.
We did the groundbreaking during the weekend. And that was a long drive.
Do people go to town hall?
Sure, I'm the alcohol sign for Village Hall.
Hunter?
Well, how about, how about Thursday, September first?
What, what about, what about we just couple with the fall town hall?
All town hall meeting, coincide it with it?
No, you have Thursday, and then you do what we do fall town hall, or what we do town hall.
Do we have a fall town hall?
No, we don't, we haven't scheduled any because of, we didn't know when we were going to be in here.
But I'd kill two birds with one stone.
We should have that.
Fifteen?
No, that's, that's somebody's birthday.
Fifteen.
His birthday is the what, seventh?
No, mine's the fifteenth.
Mine's the seventh. Well, it's November, it's your birthday, too.
So you kill three birds with?
All people came to a party, so also the first day of Hispanic Eve, which.
It's gonna be you putting stuff on the house.
No.
How about the working, that's it, Wednesday, we have the fall town hall, or town hall Wednesday.
Yeah.
Well, to me, no, to me, like, a celebration, I don't want to have to sit down and argue and talk some rules.
Oh, but if you don't eat, it wasn't serious, so.
No, they just said, let's couple it with a fall town hall meeting.
No.
A mingle. No, because it's a meeting and greet and just.
So that's, okay, let's sit in the first, because it's the first in the school, people will do that, let's sit in the first.
So with a ceremony on Thursday, September first.
Alright, so you guys have all the invitations, after March, I guess.
Hold all requests till after March, I guess.
Put it on your action items.
It's on my list, it's on my list.
Alright.
So invitations and stuff, we're on that list, so.
Huh?
What AVD, anybody in?
Uh, we might have AVD by then, who knows? Probably.
I think we beat all the topics up tonight. Agenda, your view of action ideas?
Alright, um, hopefully this is pretty succinct, uh, Christina will work on getting a meeting together between some of y'all, at least some of you all, and some of the Board of County Commissioners on water and sewer. Uh, Hunter's going to put the discussion of dwelling units on the work session, as well as the, uh, the funds the county received from South Carolina, um, the developer in South Carolina. Uh, let's see, Christina and Jamie will implement the vehicle tax, and we'll get some communications out about that. Uh, we will pursue a geo bond, we'll get some information for you all on that. Uh, we will get the maps out for Marvin Day, I'm going to follow up with Gene Stowe, uh, let's see. Christina, Jo, um, Joe and Kim, you guys will finalize the light selection for the pedestrian lights.
Huh?
You guys are going to finalize the light selection for the pedestrian lights. Uh, after Marvelling, um, and we will move forward, like, September first, ribbon cutting ceremony.
Dan, are you all set, ready?
Hold on, let me pull it up. Hold on, you gotta pull it up.
Next up, a new ongoing action areas. Next up, we do ongoing action orders.
Alright, Hunter, or Ross came off as other two, so I'm...
Okay, no one cares, okay, got it?
I mean, I've done everything that I can.
Maybe I can, or, 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 please, I don't know, okay. Do we personate for the man?
Don't know if we did that, did? Let me take that off. Where's that at? Oh, there it is, okay, yep, go on.
I emailed the Innesburg connection. So you can check that.
Check on that property, if you see what you can raise it while it's annexed in?
I don't think they want to annex, I think we're just looking into it.
We looked into, we were, we might, might need to get...
We need help, we don't know what property.
Whoever brought that...
It was Wayne, and we'll just, yeah, because we looked into it, and there was like, really one, yeah, we're just looking into it.
Um, Christine, what about the NCPA, do you drive, because I can wonder, we asked to do it again, what is it? Um, if you can get back to me, because I did follow up, then, again, today on the ditch, I had to come and get back there. Um, you can take off the ditch, your part goes with what you said, it's more past Marvin Day, um, right, so, yeah.
Did we finish the skid loader, was that what you said, the, the five hundred dollars for the skid loader?
I, I'll get it.
Christine, did you get the...
Jamie, we talked about the problem. I, I got a receipt, you know?
I've got a hard copy at the house, I got two of them.
I received the receipt, yeah.
I've got the hard copy at my house, he sent the email to Christina, but she didn't get it, so I got a hard copy at the house.
Who's department over there? That's the way funding company. Is that the DOT roundabout agreement, Christine? Very good, that's...
Check off roundabout agreement, alright.
You can take off the design, which is where I'm reading, or, uh...
Okay.
Going down, there's, um, Jamie and I want to go to those trees.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's...
You don't want to lay it off, because some of the trees are lean.
What? It's been handled.
Some trees are...
I know, it's been handled.
Okay, so, they're going to fix it?
Yeah.
Oh, it's very...
So we're good?
We just were there last.
Yeah.
Yeah, we met twice.
We went there to the home, actually.
Very good.
Um, council, council documents. Jamie, do you have anything?
Jamie's also... He's not listening, he's not, he's not yet. Alright, you're not listening.
Next. We have closed session next.
Yes, it is.
Bob?
Uh, I'm just excited, you know, not only to work with the council, as we've all worked together as a team, but now to be in a brand-new place that's reflective of the community, so I'm excited for the citizens to be able to visit and see, and we've got ample seating for people to come and watch us and participate, so, I want to thank again the staff for the great job you guys have been doing, especially with Marvin Day, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm super excited to be in Village Hall, everybody's done a great job with it, you guys, staff, some amazing jobs, getting in, getting out, and amazing job here, yeah, you guys did a great job with everything that you do, that's very appreciated, um, we have, we have brought you, the community, to the river, we are here at the river, we have food, come in and drink the water.
I think you just wrote a song.
Just said, thanks, for me, it's been nine years walking into the first town hall, asking why are we there, it's taken nine years, I'd like to first thank the council for making this happen after all those years, more importantly, thank you staff for all your hard work, seeing as especially you saved a lot of money, I'm having a general, basically, contractor overseeing everything, so I'm sure you learned a lot, another feather in your hat as far as that, but more importantly, congrats to the staff, I mean, you guys deserve a, a nice place, an environment to work, and including our officers that are here providing those rooms, and, you know, not only do you guys deserve this, but our, someone said your talent deserves this, so, just so thrilled that you're in here, and looking forward to all the, um, many years to be, you know, maybe not me in this division, but many years for this to be a great, I guess, starting point for the heritage district as well, and you know, we did get the best of it, it's on that list today, but hopefully things sort of come together with that, so, and then, I just want to do, after the first session, um, Marvin, this is Elton Cotty, it's a young kid, and his father comes with a food truck, but there's great things up there, they, their, their house is, right?
I saw that, I was sitting, I saw that.
He said like May, end of May.
That's the new Max Skinner front?
Elton Cotty, I think it is.
Elton Cotty, yes.
Very good.
Oh, anyways, with that, I'm making a motion to move into both sessions.
I'm making a three session, plus session, so NCPA one four three three one eight dot one one eighty-three, so a attorney employed or retained by a couple of bodies, preparing to turn my criminal, and NCPA one four three that three one eight dot one one eighty-six, six seven nine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.